Welcome to the May regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I'm Chair of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiki, Marilyn North-Pagan, Susan Mallon, Kim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell, TJ Tsong, Jeff French, Cherie Nice and Jordan, and Councillors Jennifer Wynas and Raj Dollywall. Our Commission is also pleased to be welcoming three new members tonight. Commissioners Ayo Adidran, get the name faster next time, Kelly Ogil and Robert Tange. Together they bring expertise in advanced technology, psychiatry, business and public policy. We look forward to having their voices around our table and want to extend a very warm welcome to them this afternoon. Thank you for joining our board and contributing to this important work. As a note, Mr. Iowa said that he was not able to attend today. As always, today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Chief, would you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thank you Chair, it's Superintendent Joe Barar on behalf of the Chief. Speaking in relation to items five, agenda items number five, on behalf of the Calgary Police Service will be Deputy Chief Chad Topic, Acting Deputy Chief Malon Zaskew, Acting Deputy Chief Ryan Allen, Superintendent Kevin Forson, Manager Lisa Gary and Staff Sergeant Sean Gregson. We also have a number of external guests with us here today to speak on item number five point two, Mr. David Cooper, Mr. Simon Minelli, and Shannon Fleming and Mr. Aaron Coon.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome. And thank you for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our Commission is a body of thirteen community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of city council. We provide direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the police complaint process and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our Commission is meeting today on the traditional territory of the Nitsitsapi, made up of the Sigzigga, Bagani and Gynai First Nations, the Yarahe Nakota comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa and Wesley First Nations and the Tutsina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous or other people of colour. For those of us, for those joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from Calgary Police Service, Commission members and Commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public portion of the meeting with the Chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media can participate. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissions, Commissioners. Hearing no declarations and seeing none, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing no requests, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Seeing no requests and hearing none, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. I will now provide my Chair's report. I have a number of things that I would like to touch on in this month's Chair's report. Even though there were no meetings for our Commission in April, the past two months have been anything but quiet for us. The largest development was the announcement we made two weeks ago that Mark Newfeld will continue to lead the Calgary Police Service until 2027. Chief Newfeld was brought into the organisation to create change. He has since let it through amazing changes, unprecedented challenges including the economic downturn, a global pandemic, political unrest and very public calls for police reform. As our city settles into a new normal, our Commission believes that CPS is on a path that will deliver on the changes Calgarians and members want. Stability and leadership will ensure this good work continues uninterrupted. I want to thank Chief Newfeld for agreeing to stay on and for his work over the past four years. As we know, he did not do it alone. We are also grateful to all the members of the Calgary Police Service who worked tirelessly through the challenges of the past few years to get us on the path we are now walking. Another major development was the provincial appointment of our Commission's three new members. The change springs us in line with most police boards across the country who have a mix of municipal and provincial appointees. Police commissions in Alberta have even had provincial appointees before too throughout the 1970s. While there's still a few things to iron out with the province for the next few appointment process, we are very pleased to have our three new members, excuse me, our three new members attend with us today. Welcome to all of you. This month has also been an active one for conversations with city council. Commissioner Campbell and I spoke to the council's Community Development Committee today on the key performance indicators our Commission uses to evaluate the service. Chief Newfeld and the service also presented their annual report to council at the same meeting to share the successes and challenges of 2022. Our Commission will be presenting our annual report next month. And earlier this month, we were pleased to share with council what we believe will be the greatest impacts of the recent Police Act amendments on the municipality. We have appreciated the open dialogue and interest in making sure everyone is ready for the changes. The past two months have also been busy for our Commissioners. Most of us took some time to go on ride-alongs with officers to learn more about how frontline policing and the School Resource Officer Programme and those that haven't had an opportunity yet plan to get out in the near future. We also had the honour of attending ceremonies where outstanding CPS members were recognised with the Queen Elizabeth II Platinum Jubilee Medals and the Chiefs Awards. A few Commissioners attended other ceremonies to celebrate anyone who was recently promoted, welcome new officers to the service and close the year for the youth cadet programme. We even had a staff member participate in one of the Run With A Recruiter mornings to see firsthand how that innovative programme works. And as a final piece of Commission news, our staff are very pleased to be moving to new office space this week. Our meeting today is fully virtual because we are still between offices, but our next meeting will be held in a new boardroom that we hope will meet our needs better. Our Commission has also been pleased to see the numerous ways that the members of the service delivered on the priorities of Calgarians these past two months. The service conducted outstanding community outreach as the Calgary's Muslim community observed Ramadan and Eid and Calgary Sikh community observed Visakhay, making an effort to celebrate these events with community goes a long way towards building trust and relationships as we know your presence was appreciated. Members from across the service have also been supporting the Safe Public Spaces Action Plan, which is a joint effort by CPS and the city of Calgary to address crime and disorder on transit and in other public spaces. We will hear more about what that plan has accomplished later in our meeting, but it is clearly having an impact. The security guards in our own building even commented on the difference they've noticed downtown. While not directly connected to the Safe Public Spaces Plan, investigators and undercover officers laid 268 charges related to drug trafficking along the sea train line, sending the messages that this activity will not be tolerated on transit property. The service also made quick arrests in several violent incidents on transit property. While these events are disturbing to Calgarians, it is good to see that the people responsible for the violence are facing charges. Our city also saw two very high-profile cases where the professionalism of the service was clearly seen. Officers responded to a series of random stabbings in the east side of downtown, quickly taking a suspect into custody and preventing loss of life. Calgarians also watched in shock as investigators, search teams and forensic experts combed a rural property in Rocky View County. Later hearing that a man has been charged with kidnapping, drugging, assaulting multiple women working in the sex trade added to that shock. The amount of work that has gone into that case is remarkable and we are grateful to all the members involved who worked tirelessly to bring these charges. Another noteworthy investigation was the solving of three thirty-nine-year-old sexual assaults. Many Calgarians probably don't realise the effort that the service puts into reviewing and solving cold cases, but last month's charges show that this work pays off. There are so many other examples of great work, from the operation Targeting Street Racing to expanding the partnership with the Alex, to partnering with Her Victory to create a bad dateline for sex trade workers. Members are doing outstanding things to serve our community. Thank you to all of you. Calgary's see your dedication and are grateful for what you do. With that, I conclude my Chair's report and will now move on to the services' presentations. We're starting with a heavier presentation today. The service conducted a review of their unsolved homicides from the past seventeen years to see what could be learned. While homicide is a topic we wish never needed to be discussed, we look forward to hearing about what the review found. Chief Newfeld, could you please go ahead with your first presentation?
Much, Chair. And just before we do, thank you for your kind comments in relation to good work by our members, operationally, investigatively and also for the work done in the community. Those are very well placed. On behalf of everybody here, I echo that same gratitude. So thank you. It is a pleasure to be here today, to be back with you, to work through the agenda and to get back after a month or so off. And also just before we go ahead, I also wanted to welcome the new members of the Commission that have been appointed and who join us tonight. That is excellent as well. In relation to the presentation of unsolved homicide report, I'm going to hand it over to Acting Deputy Chief Daley and he'll introduce the team for the presentation.
Thanks very much, Chief, Chair, Commissioners. We're very excited today to do this report. I know it is a heavy topic. And thanks for acknowledging that, but the impetus for this report actually comes from a good place. And I think when we set out to do this work, it was so that we, because we recognised there was an opportunity here to potentially connect to the families of the victims of these homicides. So, sitting next to me is Manager Lisa Gary, Inspector Kevin Forson and Staff Sergeant Sean Gregson, who are members of our homicide unit and support this work. So I am not certain if we're sharing screen either side or. Okay. Sorry. Just waiting a second.
Give us a second while we set up, please.
Okay, some of us have been speaking to councils and members of councils for a long time already today, so. I started, I started one earlier today, a little bit ahead of two other speakers, so there you go. However.
Okay, thanks everybody. It's hard with the delay. Before I start, I want to give you the background as to why we did this report. This is a report that was requested by members of the Calgary Police Commission. It was something I decided to do internally. I had an opportunity to travel to train as part of my duties here in the CPS. I met a colleague from another city. We got to discussing his city and our city and he said he loved Calgary but hadn't been able to return to Calgary for over fifteen years because of the pain it caused him as a result of one of his family members being murdered. And we got into a conversation about that and I was a little bit surprised. He said, well, we haven't heard anything in well over a decade. Or to be just, wasn't sure what to think. I wasn't sure if that was the truth. I wasn't sure. It just didn't seem right. But what it allowed me to do is to come back and talk to the team about what is our continuity with respect to investigations go well over a decade? What are they short-term? Are there gaps in how we communicate with families? And so we decided that we would renew a report that had been done in 2016. And so go ahead, Sean. To give us a glimpse of where we were exactly with our unsolved. It would allow us to take a look at, you know, what's still unsolved, how the report could be updated, do we have gaps in how we deal with victims of families of these victims and maybe as a way that we can approach this in a trauma-informed way, when viewed as an opportunity. This is potentially an opportunity for us to connect to families in a positive way over a very heavy topic for sure. And maybe start gaining some trust in the community. So there's a lot on this first slide. There's, there's only a few slides, so we've loaded them up. We focus on 2005 to 2021 just because of the quality of our data from that period. It's our intention to go back and look and start looking back so we can start 2000 to 2023 or 2024, depending on the iteration of the. Some of the big things are there. In that time period, there were four hundred and forty members of Calgary. That's an average of twenty-six a year. You know, on average, six of those will be unsolved in a year, but that could fluctuate. So what does that mean? That means that, for example, in 2016, a year is end, there were, our clearance rate is fifty-nine percent, but now 2016, the clearance rate is eighty-three percent. So that shows that our investigations continued years after the offense itself until we get to the truth and potential closure on those files. Out of that four hundred and forty, a number, a hundred and forty were organised crime and drug-related and sixty-two are of those files are not yet cleared. So that's forty-five percent of those files. The clearance rate climbs with the passage of time. It should be noted that offences like, for example, domestic homicide or homicides where the offender is known to the victim are more straightforward when it comes to investigating and solving. And the gang motivated and gun homicides are the hardest for us to clear. Why is that? This is something that we learn in retreat class. That's the Walcott's Exchange Principle. Basically, with a firearm, you can, you can shoot somebody at a distance with other forms of homicide. You have to be close. And when you're close, defenders will be clues in that vicinity and we can use those to help solve cases. Something that we want to point out here, the national clearance rate was sixty-seven percent and it took thirty-six days on average for a homicide to be solved. The average in Calgary is twenty-five days and our clearance rate is closer to seventy-nine percent. So, thanks to Lisa, we've displayed some of these things visually and we do this a lot in the homicide area just so that we can look at different ways to look at trending and sorting things out. You'll notice that with the years, the highest number of unsolved homicides are also the years with the highest number of shooting deaths. During these years, there's seven years between 2005 and 2021 with the highest number of homicides. They also have the highest number of shooting deaths. So there were eighty-three shooting homicides within those highest years. The sixty percent of our unsolved homicides involve firearms.
Sorry for interrupting. I wonder if you could focus on speaking into the microphone? Your voice is kind of going in and out and we're, we're losing a little bit of your, of your words there. Thanks.
Oh, for sure. You know, it just required me to not look at you and talk to the microphone, which is.
Anyway, that's okay. We can listen very well and then you can look at us afterwards.
I could certainly talk louder. So Calgary has been fortunate to see a relatively small number of missing, long-term missing, I should say, or murdered Indigenous victims, particularly women. So since 2010, we've got two Indigenous female victims and four Indigenous male victims among our unsolved homicides. You'll note that we have in that time period, and it's a smaller number because we were only collecting race-based data for homicides since 2010. So that for us is, this number actually that you're seeing here in the breakdown is from two hundred and ninety-three homicides, so just under fifty percent are white. The remainder are non-white. You can see the breakdown presented there on the slide. Like I said, these stats are based on the race data for 2010 to 2020. So we don't have any data prior to this yet. We're working on that, but for us to do that, we have to go through case by case. We can't pull that data yet without going to the file. This is the slide that we really wanted to get to. What are we doing? Well, we have a relatively high overall clearance rate, seventy-nine percent, which I mentioned below, and by comparison, the national rate is sixty-seven percent. This is the last reporting period, which was in 2021. Among a hundred and sixty-four accused persons charged in a Calgary homicide case during, like in between 2015 and 2021, one-third were charged in the first forty-eight. So that means like, for people that are familiar with that term, what we do in Calgary is we front-load investigations heavily within the first forty-eight hours in the hopes that we can expedite evidence collection and we don't lose perishable things in video. The scene is, we use our major crash response protocol which involves our FCSU unit. And we collect a lot of evidence that way that leads us to, like we talked about before, the truth, which leads us to closing cases. Nationally, the average solved time for homicide is thirty-six days. Here in Calgary, it's twenty-five days. Contrary to national findings, Calgary's solve rate is faster than Canada's with racialised victims as opposed to non-racialised victims. So what that means is we solve cases faster with racialised victims than the national average. I asked why. I think I knew the answer to this, but I ask anyway, because the team had something different to say. That's because here in Calgary, we invest heavily in our community through other programmes, so we have our diversity here. We have people working in the community and that allows us, in a lot of cases, to create relationships that lead to trusted information exchange. So we believe that is the advantage we have in Calgary. That stems from the programmes we have embedded in a lot of our our programmes. And finally, the whole impetus of this report was to look at what I talked about when I when I ran into my colleague in that other city. So what we've decided to do is we did recognise that there were gaps in our contact with families. Not with nefarious intent. It's just that in some of these cases, particularly the ones that go over a decade, we have investigators that retired. We have families who, for instance, at the beginning of an investigation might be hostile or not in a place where they feel like they can't to the police, but that changes over time. So we recognise that we had to invent this in a part of our service that would allow us not have this sort of slip with families. So what are we doing? We're working with our victim assistance team. So Inspector Forson and his team are, are embedding this family contact within our victims. What does that look like particularly for trauma-informed? It means that we'll give the families, once they're at a point where it transitions from the primary investigator and we know that the investigation may be longer than than what we obviously investigate for, we want to give the families an opportunity to choose how they interact with us. That means they may not want to interact with us. They may not want regular updates. That's okay. They may want once yearly, they may want only updates with something changed to the case, but we're given that choice. Our work is currently being done now. We understand that reconnecting with families that we haven't connected with in time, out of time, things can be traumatic. So we are working closely with our services and resources here so that we prepare ourselves as careful as possible when we. The last thing we noted in, as we started to do this work is that our homicide cases went past a certain date or investigation. They went to what we call the cold case team, which we thought was a pretty common inaccurate form. But in the feedback we got when we were working with these families, in some cases it triggered them. And so this is work done by Sean and his team. He's come back and, and now more and more police organisations are going to historical unsolved homicide team. So we're going to start to transition our team into that just because it seems to be right now a more appropriate trend for this. So it doesn't sound like it doesn't, it's triggering the rest of people. So with that, any questions on this report?
Thank you very much for that presentation and all the work that went into going on behind the scenes and with the team and the rest. So thank you for that. I will turn it over to Commissioners for questions. Commissioner Siddiki, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for the report. I appreciate it and I, I actually really appreciate the care and thought that's being put into all of this in terms of going back and speaking to people and communicating sort of that whole emotional intelligence piece and even around changing the name. So thank you for that. You mentioned that, you know, the racialised crimes that you have that in Calgary, we're solving, solving them faster than across the country due to the great programming we have, which is fantastic. But you said it's also taking longer to solve those racialised homicides here. Can you explain why? Like, do you have any sort of facts or theories behind that?
There's no one answer to that. When we look at the report that we have as it is now, we're focusing on the last, you know, since twenty, since 2005. It could be that a lot of those unsolved, in those cases, involve firearms. Would probably be the clear sense, I think, you. And so firearms are tougher for us to solve. Particularly because we talked about the evidence is less if you're, if you're using a firearm, you're committing a offense at a distance. And in some cases, if, if they're not being solved as quickly there is in some communities, it's just tougher for us to create trusting relationships to get the information to solve these types of. And if I've missed anything, can you say? You're nothing from them. I think that's the answer.
Really, it's guns and then there's the lack of trust of coming forward and talking to the police and basically.
Lack of trust, it's through all our communities, but specifically, you know, if there's communities where people are Native, you're Canadian. It also manifests in fear and intimidation. So. which prevents that information exchange.
So, sorry, I didn't hear what he said, but that's okay. It's okay. I know it's a bit complicated in that room today. I guess so. My question is, and I know you're doing so much and I understand that there's been a lot of outreach to to the various communities. Is there anything extra that you might be doing that we should be aware of that's already not happening to solve some of these more racialized historic historical homicides?
I can tell you with every single homicide, I don't think there's anything we want you to solve it. I can't think of one of these homicides that we wouldn't do absolutely everything to solve. Full stop.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you Superintendent Dale for the presentation and the report. My questions are are really simple today. So the first one is, there's a category other on the chart on page eight of the report. What types of homicides are included in that section?
We can get back to you on that one for other. If that's okay with you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. I appreciate that. My last question is going to require a little bit more thinking. So what inferences are you able to make about homicides with respect to two S LGBTQI plus individuals? And the intersectionality of race from the data that you've presented?
That is going to require some thinking. My first thought would be, would you be okay if we took that away and came back?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Back to you, Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Northbeggan.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I I just hope CPS realizes that this is the first time this type of data is is reaching the public. So, you know, you really have to commend yourselves on actually producing this type of data. That being said, I was in my provincial meetings last week and there was a lady there who who sits on the premier's council to the deliver the MMIWG calls to action. And she was she was talking about the push to actually include the indigenous men within the the data moving forward. So that is going to come. And one thing that you need to actually include in doing well is actually including the indigenous men on that because they're going to move from the MMIW G two S plus to actually the MMIWP, which is the Missing and Murdered Indigenous People. So that is the comment and you guys, like, I'm just giving you a heads up on that. With that being said, you mentioned that this data is from years two thousand to two thousand and twenty-three. I just wanted to know how long it's going to take to produce the data before then. And and what are the types of challenges? Because a lot, some of these things were hidden away. You know, what are the the types of challenges? Actually, maybe we need to think ahead at at the type of challenges that are going to be produced and actually trying to dig up that kind of data. But thank you so much for producing this job. Well done. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Did you want to comment there? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Northbeggan. I know that you and I have discussed missing and murdered a number of times. We are engaged in the community. We know and I do appreciate the heads up. We know about we have that, we're prepared for that. We've been including it as part of our missing team presentation, I think, which which came a few months ago. And we're actively reporting on that now with to the commission, which is a brand new report. So thanks for bringing that up. I guess that'd be the only comment to that. And once that comes forward, there's a definite connection here, which is why we've embedded our missing persons team into our homicide unit. So you're going to see the crossover. I think that's what you're recognizing is a lot of the crossover between those two bodies of work.
Just one extra comment I wanted to make because I think Staff Sergeant Gregson made an important comment that I don't think the commissioners were able to hear. And I don't want it to get lost. And that is that one of the things that I think is a big barrier in some of these homicides is the trust and and the intimidation piece that people feel within community. Oftentimes, community members know who's involved in high-risk behavior and they actually know who's involved in shootings and that type of thing. And sometimes they'll even come forward and tell the police who it is, but that doesn't necessarily equate to hard evidence to lay charges with. And there's oftentimes this this gap, I think, or this delta between what, you know, people's perceptions are of what the police can do relative to what they can do without hard evidence. And I think when the community sees people who they know to be involved in violent crime and they see them released again and again, or they don't see consequences, a lot of times I think they're very apprehensive to come forward. And and a lot of people obviously think that very hard for them as well that are involved, who want to intimidate them. So I think that's a really important piece because there's there's a lot of times where we need to go back and investigators go back over the years. Because even when we have people that are involved in high-risk lifestyles or they feel like they're vulnerable at a particular time, years later, they may not be and they may be in a different place. And so sometimes we see files move forward, investigations move forward simply over the passage of time where key witnesses are no longer in a position where they feel vulnerable to retribution or intimidation or whatever. So I think that's why, you know, these files, investigators do such a great job. And the files never close and they keep going back. Advancements in science is obviously one thing that helps us to move forward. But also, I think, just dogged determination of keeping going back and keeping connected. And I think that's one of the things Ryan said was underscored in this work is that keeping connected with those folks is really important. And oftentimes, people may come forward years later where they didn't feel safe enough to do it at the time. So so I just think that's a key piece we don't want to lose here. Thanks, Charles.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that that extra explanation. Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thanks. I have two questions. One probably is easier than the other, but the first question I have is you identified that the domestic violence homicides are a lot easier because of the transfer of evidence. I still noted significant numbers of unsolved domestic violence ones. So given that circumstance, you know, is there something else going on that we, you know, and I'm thinking of the intimidation factor maybe a component there. So that's one question I have. And the second is you, I think, very well identified why gun homicides are so difficult. I would like to know whether or not there's any technology or any other method to get at those that are being used in other departments that we just don't have access to. Is there something more we could be doing that we haven't acquired either the technology or the methodology?
Those are very good questions. Thank you. The the first question, I think, part of part of that answer is going to be in domestic violence homicides. Sometimes it's the threshold of evidence required for it to be to clear the the charge approval, depending on how domestic itself results. So in some cases, it might not make the threshold of a homicide, even though one partner kills another partner, however, the the makeup of that domestic homicide is, we might not get tried approval. So in those cases, that would be one of the pieces. Kevin, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I was just going to say that that's a big challenge. So there's many of the unsolved files from the report. The investigators have identified and I'm quite confident we have great suspects for the files. But our level of our threshold of presence, the Crown prosecutors have a higher threshold. And part of their measurement is likelihood of conviction. And so that's a lot of the files that go on extended period of time. The investigators are working with the Crown prosecutors to achieve that level of evidence gap. Challenge. Respect to the science, we are very proud of it. I'm very proud of the team. I think we're one of the leading edges for using DNA and genetic genealogy to help further investigations. So that's always, as you've seen over the last six months, we've been able to close some very historic files through the advancements of science, having some very, very dedicated investigators. Once they put their hearts into these investigations and achieve closure after forty-five years.
All right, yeah, our investigators are going to, I really appreciate that question because then we can talk about we're going to be national leaders in undercover work with the support of our executive and the CPC. We've been able to make purchases recently with respect to DNA technology, three D scanning technology, things that allow us to process teams in an advanced way. In fact, it creates its own problems, good problems in that our standard, when we present evidence to our crown, they become used to a certain standard where other jurisdictions to get things through with less of a bar than we set here in Calgary, which we sometimes have to point out to our crowds because of the kind of technology, because of the kind of work that our investigators and our leaders here in that space do to bring evidence aboard for investigations. This is not something that we ever take a step back on. Even today, I was part of a national meeting on undercover tactics. We're discussed. Calgary's brought up in that space, things around four ninety and evidence retention. We're working on that with our investigators so that we don't lose evidence over long and drawn periods of times, particularly when we're seizing evidence of a technological nature. So those are things that we're we're actively stepping into as a service so that we can be then as a nation, just for the entire purpose of making sure that our files are advanced for the most likelihood of success.
It's one thing to add and maybe Kevin or Sean could comment on this. I think Commissioner Nice and Jordan, you raise a very good point. A lot of times, some of the most spirited conversations, I think, between our investigators and the Crown are around the fact that we feel we've reached, especially not not uniquely to domestics, but on homicides in general. We feel like we're there and we've reached the threshold. And the Crown will sometimes say, you know, not quite, we need one other little piece. And those are sometimes very difficult conversations, but I but I would say this. The Crowns are usually very well-intended as well. Well, not usually, they certainly are. They know that if somebody's tried for a case like this and they're found to be not guilty, they cannot be tried again, even if something substantial comes forward. So they're looking at trying not to not to sort of put a put a family in a situation where they never do get justice for something that's happened. So they'll always seem to want a little bit more and will always, knowing lots about the file, will always often think that we're there. And I think those are discussions that are sometimes, you know, that's why there's independence between the police and the ground. And that's one place that we do rub with respect to getting justice for homicide victims. Anything you could add to that?
No, I would agree with that a hundred percent. And I would almost say that with the passage of time and our historical files, that bar starts to even increase from the Crown prosecutor's perspective because they've got the loss of time, memory, and those ones seem to be that much harder. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's a matter of fact, yesterday Sean and I met for an hour with one of our detectives who's been working on a incidentally historic unsolved homicide trial for four years. And she just got a letter back that she hadn't hit the threshold yet. So it's how there are most strained conversations with the Crown or those decisions of working with their management to try and rehabilitate our our position as public safety and and there is like we are the conviction. So that's it's different levels and so we have to work together with them. So.
Thank you. And Commissioner Russell.
Yes, thank you. Actually, it's just a follow-up to that threshold question. Do you have a sense offhand for like what percent-ish of the, you know, ninety-six unsolved homicides are due to the threshold issue, like that you actually have a strong suspect, but you you know, versus being completely, you really don't know who it is?
Good question, Commissioner Russell. We would have to take that away and actually look at each of these files. Some of them, we would not have even had that discussion yet with the Crown because we don't feel ourselves we've met that evidentiary threshold. Some we probably have, and there's a few that you might be aware of in some of the other presentations we've given in closed sessions. So if that's an answer, we could get back to you with some of the others, then we will.
Yeah, that's fine. And I'm not meaning to create a bunch of work. I was just wondering if you had a sense offhand for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for this, the presentation and again for all the work that's gone into it. The persistence and determination and and the, I mean, it's compassion and commitment to to carry on with these investigations is remarkable and and so important to to the people involved. So thank you very much. Really appreciate that. For the second presentation this meeting, we're pleased to have guests joining us from the city of Calgary. As policing involves partnering with other agencies to address complex problems is becoming essential for police services. As a governance body, that means we too need to be constantly sharing information and collaborating with our peers across the sector. City Council received a report and presentation on transit security earlier this month. And Calgary Transit offered to come and do the same presentation for us. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and discuss this topic with us as well, so that we can have the same base knowledge as council has. And and I think this is is critical. We've seen the partnering we've been doing over the last couple of years and and it continues. And so the transit safety is is a huge item. So thank you very much. I know it it takes time, but we we welcome your input. So I will turn it over to you. Please go ahead.
Sure. Just in terms of logistics in the room, we have our partners from the city of Calgary just actually coming up to positions where we think you might be able to hear them better. So if you just give us just two seconds, we'll come back and get you tropical Mr. President. This is a really, I think this is going to be a great session. Well, it's here to chew on for the commission.
I think this is the time that we're all remembering that while we did learn how to do all of these things virtually and manage for a couple of years, in person or at least hybrid is way better. So we look forward to your new office space. Looks like you're almost ready there.
All right. Thanks very much, Chair and members of the commission. Chat topic here. I'll do the quick introduction just to let you know who all is in the room. We really appreciate their support and assistance in bringing up this presentation forward. We have Simon Minelli, the Director of Research Technical Services and Industry Programs with the Canadian Urban Transit Association. He's online. David Cooper, Principal for Leading Mobility Consulting is here in the room. We have Sharon Fleming, the Director of Calgary Transit, also in the room. Thank you for being here. And Aaron Coon, Chief of Public Vehicle Standards Division, which includes Transit Public Safety, also in the room. Thanks for being here. And we also have some strategists working on this project as well. Dustin Rogers, the Leader of Business Strategy for Calgary Transit, and Andrew Leon, a Business Strategist for Calgary Transit. And as mentioned, this presentation was provided at the Infrastructure and Planning Committee of Council on May tenth. And it will be going forward to full council next week on the sixth with the related recommendations that were addressed by the subcommittee. And as for the report, the purpose in bringing it to CPC is to inform the commission on the collaborative work going on with us and them in looking at public safety. The technical reports which were in the package, I I realized they were quite lengthy. They were there for your interest. I know that some of you would have an interest in some of those technical reports. So they weren't required reading, but for your benefit, in case you had the interest there, lots of good information. Also, this is going to provide you with an opportunity to ask questions as it pertains to public safety and the work going on across city business lines. As you know, we've outlined this in the two thousand and twenty-three annual policing plan as a key
As you know, we've outlined this in the twenty twenty-three annual policing plan as a key initiative for us. And we see transit safety as a subset of overall community safety. So we're going to start with the work on by the Canadian Urban Transit Association work and task force recommendations, and then we'll move directly into the city of Calgary work. And then we'll go for questions after that. So I'll pass it over to Simon first to introduce the task.
Sure. Thank you. And I'll start just by thanking the Commission for having us to talk about this. This is, you know, representing the transit industry. This is something our members across the country really felt strongly about and you know, asked us to address in a number of different ways. So we really appreciate the consideration and time. If we can go to the next slide. I'll set a little bit of the context for these recommendations and then I'm going to hand it over to David Cooper to go through the recommendations in more detail. But basically, last year in June, June of twenty twenty-one, a number of our members, especially from the larger systems in Canada asked us to put together a task force for a rising number of different types of incidents they saw happening, occurring on their system. In particular, you know, it was happening across the country, but in particular, systems that have you know, metro systems or rapid transit systems where there were a number of physical stations. And the incidents involved incidents that do involve violence or safety, as well as other types of incidents such as people housing on transit, people using a drug use on the transit system, having mental health crises on the system. And you know, a lot of systems didn't feel like they necessarily had the tools to deal with this or that, that it was something that, that they were able to address directly. So they asked to put this task force together, come together and try to help each other through this. But as time went on, I think the number of incidents escalated, the number of high profile incidents escalated and the number of perceived levels of safety by the public escalated. And so they asked us to move quicker and put something out that would compile a number of recommendations together with the work that they, each individual system had been doing. So these twenty-seven recommendations are all within those areas. A lot of them, some of them are for specific transit systems, recommendations that systems should make. But some of these recommendations do go outside the scope of just transit. And I should mention that's a bit unique for us at QDA. Typically, we stay within just the transit ecosystem. But these were issues that were societal issues, but we, the transit industry felt like couldn't be ignored anymore. They were impacting operations. They were impacting the safety of staff, of riders. And so we had to say something and provide recommendations in some cases that are for different levels of government or other groups to assist on this. And so you can see the number of systems or the specific systems that help us develop these recommendations on the screen. They are also national in scope. So I'll just clarify that. Meaning they're not necessarily system specific. And so sometimes, you know, it's going to take each system and each city and each province to kind of get together and come up with the solutions specifically that relate to them using, we hope this helps as a framework. So I think that's it. With that, I'll hand it over to David to go through the specific recommendations.
Sorry, we're just seeing a little change here. Simon, could you maybe walk through the next steps on this work?
Sure.
Evolving before I.
Yep. So as you can see on the screen, we release the recommendations press release on April twenty-fourth. It did receive a decent amount of media attention in different places. So we've been trying to take as much feedback as we can. We're now putting together high level action plan for how we intend to monitor or assist in implementing or operationalizing these recommendations. We are going to be having a roundtable with the individuals from the transit industry, as well as those from different related sectors later in June. And through that, we're going to use the upcoming months to start to put those actions into plan with the kind of high level goal of having something more concrete developed in the fall.
Awesome. Thanks, Simon, for the overview and thanks to Chief Newfield and Deputy Chief Topic for asking us to come here today. So we're going to go through two items. The first one being these national transit safety recommendations, as well as the close system reports. I'm going to run through the recommendations with a bit of a lens on Calgary. This work got a lot of support from individuals in Calgary Transit, particularly Sharon Fleming, Dustin Rogers, and several members of the EMCS team that is overseen by Eric Coon. So definitely a lot of Calgary insights perspective. They were not, they were not agency specific, but when I go through them and what's happening next, how they're kind of shaping and evolving other pieces of work, I'll touch on that just for the Calgary lens on this conversation today. There was five different focus areas for these recommendations. The first two was really on customer and staff safety and really involving the scoping of a transit safety plan, the resourcing, communication, technology, infrastructure, training. We have a series of recommendations on housing and supports, a series of recommendations on substance use and mental health that is mentioned by Simon. This is not typically a conversation that transit agencies typically have, but because the amount of societal complexities that are intersecting in our spaces and our vehicles impacting our staff and our individuals is is really a national conversation. The first recommendation is really about the development of a transit safety plan. A lot of these recommendations are things that some agencies are doing or things that are in motion. This one is particularly important to Calgary in terms of the scoping of the multidisciplinary transit strategy that will be on a council in Q three of this year that CPS has also involved in. We're recommending that transit agencies build multi-disciplinary integrated transit system plan that really speaks to the recent actions that you're taking to improve transit safety. There's a number of different programs and procedures that are occurring. Really documenting the desired outcomes and required resourcing from knowledge of transit systems, but also your partner agencies. Identifying accountability for who is responsible for delivering on the transit plan. Ensuring that you have the safety bylaws, policies, practices in place and one centralized document for reference. Document the infrastructure that is currently in place for these programs. Identifying the gaps, opportunities, calls to action for the province, other community sectors, that this is something that has gone beyond the realm of public transit agencies. It does require a lot of partnership support from organizations of CPS, any service providers in the province, as well as developing a protocol for equity for integrating equity deserving groups and development of the transit safety initiatives and programs to have a holistic view of what is the transit needs of our customer. The second is the creation of multi-disciplinary working groups. This is something that is being exercised by the Toronto Transit Commission, the city of Toronto, the Toronto Police Service. This is a lot of similarities with the previous one. So developing and implementing strategies to support and responding transit safety in the programs and resources in this particular working group by topic area. Identifying who is accountable, defining the roles responsibilities, integrated data reporting. This one's quite vital. We have a number of different data sources that are being used right now. There's CPS data here. There's data from transit public safety. There's data from our department. There's data over to health services and a whole bunch of other components. So how do you actually integrate these components? And this is not just Calgary. This is everywhere in terms of the complexity of really getting a holistic, holistic understanding of what is occurring on public transit, as well as quarterly progress reports, a lot of seasonality in the data and what we're seeing in terms of sometimes disorder on the transit system, sometimes trending of a certain complexities that are occurring on transit. So really understanding are your programs meeting the mark for requirement refinement in their approaches. A lot of similarities with the previous one, but also this is something that's actually centralized, the next steps that I know I'm working on with you to and others when they're engaging the provinces, the best for transit agencies, the next part of that action plan. Next piece is on resourcing recommendations. You'll see on the left side, speak to really a type scale and now also accountability. So third recommendation is increasing staff stability, which is really up to the transit agency, which is the most appropriate way to do so. We had a lot of conversations about the outreach continuum and the enforcement continuum and really kind of the spectrum of support that you need across transit agency or transit safety. It's not a conversation of only just having outreach, only just having enforcement. It's really, really both, any both kind of components. When you look at some of the resourcing and the policies that are occurring. Creation of project teams, which we already talked about, ensuring regulations that are placed to curb dangerous and then also smart partnerships and creating most very key for outreach. A really great example of that right now is the COT team that Calgary Partnership of the House. To a safety marketing campaign, you'll see the city has recently put additional messaging on the system for the seventy-four one hundred text line on transit. So just also providing more visibility of different ways to access support and help that needed. Reusing those barriers for customers to receive help through different means and medians if necessary. And number ten is really specific to Edmonton and Toronto, just ensuring they have self-service in some of your sub training or underground infrastructure. In terms of infrastructure enhancing station cleaning and then conducting cry prevention through our monthly design reviews at your station. Something that's done by the STM Montreal. This is something that's been looked at as part of their recommendations for Calgary. This is something that I know I'm involved in in Vancouver as well and also been looked at in other agencies in the US. So how do you create that environmental space where you have different uses on the transit service, the level of stewardship and really kind of maintenance upkeep and overall visibility and safety on the system? In terms of staff safety, there's a series of recommendations. One is de-escalation training for old frontline staff. Just understanding that if you're a transit operator and you're out in the field that you are. You know, you can get support and help from your supervisory staff and sometimes enforcement, but sometimes you'll have to navigate situations on your own. Ensuring the staff are aware of our transit initiative, especially as they're updated and revised over time. Leveraging occupational health and safety programs, these hazard assessments, control measures, your program approach. And then requesting that the government of Canada strengthen penalties for all transit operators by admitting subsection two sixty-nine point zero one of the criminal code to include all transit workers as an aggravating circumstance or consideration when sentencing. Right now, it is written that it's just for transit operators. It also has frontline customer service staff, station cleaners, agent staff, and then just ensuring that that considerations for all transit systems. In terms of housing and supports, this really starts going to the realm that's lit out of transit, but it's definitely something to face with it. So the first recommendation is about permission, federal governments should develop the housing first approach for those experiencing homelessness on transit systems and the province, the federal government should ensure the suitability of the permanent supporting housing programs with the resource wraparound supports. The next recommendation is about funding overnight access and take the social services. This is a bit of a complexity in cities like Calgary where and station closing, sometimes there's a bit of a challenge, but it comes with intake with different social service agencies and different other programs. The next recommendation also is a side of things in terms of the funding of extreme cold weather shuttle services. Do you have that here? I believe minus twenty might be the threshold on that, but you do have that service here as well. For that, but also the request of transit in Vancouver, also cooling centers as well. Just due to the kind of changing environments with conditions, whatever we see in the summer. The whole levels of government short together to fund daytime warming and cooling centers to provide program space for those who wish to use it and then posting crisis hotlines for community outreach services and shelters on the transit system. In terms of substance use, the main recommendation here is depending on the jurisdiction, leverage established for legal enforcement and or support tools for finnish drug use in transit stations and diversion or really use alternative sites. And then regional should create enhanced treatment programs. And the last three recommendations, speaking to mental health, in terms of smart partnerships and other health service providers, outreach workers on the transit system. Several transit agencies request first government to develop an authority handoff initiative between officers, these officers responsible for so that they can get quicker care and healthcare setting and also employ those resources back onto the transit system. And then regional government should provide transit agencies with dedicated mental health outreach case management services to address the quality of care and some of the wraparound services that supports that. With that, I could go into the close system next. So if you have any questions on that.
But we do the question again.
I'll move over to the next presentation, which is assessing a close system as part of the Calgary Transit Transit Safety Strategy. This report went to the Infrastructure and Planning Committee on May tenth with a series of recommendations and a presentation which will give you the same presentation here today. We'll be on a council next week on June sixth, but I'll turn it over to Eric and he'll walk through administration recommendations.
So some of the recommendations we brought forward, if you see as David had mentioned, is four recommendations for council to consider. That's going to be discussed next week is one to accept the review that was done on assessing a close system, which is our fairgate discussion that we've been having around transit safety. And have council accept the presentation and direct administration to come back in the fall Q three with a multidisciplinary transit safety strategy, which we're working in partnership with Calgary Police Service. And then two recommendations around interim funding for administration to begin some of the work that we need to do prior to the fall and going into the next winter, which is three point four million dollars to begin some of the hiring that we need as form of some of the recommendations David will be speaking to. Improve one-time funding of five point three million dollars to continue some of the infrastructure and some of the paid duties support that we're working on with Calgary Police Service.
I'll just quickly go through the technical presentation so we get to Q and A. In terms of the highlights, the city Calgary does recognize the immediate action to ensure the safety and security of the public number of transit system as part of the Calgary Transit Operational Recovery Strategy that was prepared to council last spring. The city committed to hiring an authority consultant to investigate the facility. Administration is working on a multi-disciplinary transit safety strategy to prove the safety of all Calgary's transit system, which
Sure, I'm gonna jump in there. We're losing your voice a little bit. So either closer to a mic or higher.
Just gotta speak a little louder.
Yeah, I can speak a bit louder. In advance of the transit safety strategy, Eric walked through some of the administration's recommendations when it comes to some of the next steps. In terms of the methodology for the close system study, there is, these are the key components. We did an environmental scan looking at different transit systems with different approaches when it comes to close, partially closed or open systems. We developed a series of access technologies, three options that I'll walk you through the next set of slides in terms of how we assessed different components for a close system. We developed five station groupings, really looking at the infrastructure access control design of our LRT system and in terms of how this could look like with or without different changes to, I guess, controlled access, different SAC models. We have a pretty robust partner engagement program. We have twenty-two meetings with impacted city business units or services. Police service, several different large organizations from Sports Entertainment Corporation, Calgary Stampede, Gem Association, several others, community service providers, also we have them as well, the foundation, drop center, all the house, others. We also did an in-person engagement. We brought everyone together to look at five different stations and see how close system could work or some nuances with some of this application of such. We also did engineering risk assessment and cost estimate and it's part of other work that I've been up to on a national transit safety strategy. Also went out with your frontline officers and districts one and two with a focus looking at transit as well. Also with the COT team and the police officers. We looked at three options. The first one is really looking at fair gates at every station or what we call a fully closed system. This would necessitate the elimination of the seventh avenue free bear zone. You would have transit staff at each station to support area operations. The second option is dance staff. Uh to support very good operations. Uh the second option is enhanced staff uh to support your brigade operations that are partially closed systems. This would be uh gates. At all C train stations outside of the downtown or outside of Seventh Avenue. But you get to keep the free bear zone in that option and then option three would be an enhanced staff model with an integrated customer uh safety uh component to it with no barricades. Uh we looked at uh this project through six different lenses. The first one is uh does very gate increase safety on the L R T system. What was the capital operating cost to each one of these three models? How does it impact with the existing integration or reform on the L R T system? Uh how does this impact operations, not just for counter transit in your current day-to-day service, but also your community service providers, including emergency services? Um what uh equity considerations uh are uh. The access to our own system and then while it impacts the overall customer experience. This is just a quick visualization and and there's a ninety-six page report that you can see looking at uh. Kind of where which which stations or which part of which groupings and you'll see some technical assessments as well as as how this could impact those other stations on the system. Um this is a roll of the evaluation summary. Um uh in terms of the six categories I just walked through, you'll see them on the top part of the slide and you'll see the three options listed on the uh. On the on the left side of the slide, uh in terms of fully closed system, we cannot find a correlation between inflation of barricades and increased safety. Uh there were substantial access impacts across the L R T system when it comes to integration. Uh there were significant operational challenges for both Calgary Transit, our staff partners. Uh also, when we look at things such as regional transit, looking at Green Line, uh there was um. Pretty substantial changes when it comes to accessibility and how uh many of our Calgaryans, many Calgaryans would access our L R T system with a closed system. But there is some uh benefits of a closed system when it comes to technological improvements in terms of origin destination data. If you collect it, you tab on all system, uh could help with better uh different types of fair structures in the future or uh service planning. Uh in terms of a partially closed system, um there are some some benefits and some trade-offs. The the main components is that uh. Uh there wouldn't be barricades on Seventh Avenue, so there'd be less complexity when it comes to urban integration. You have some stations that do function as a P T was. I guess connection point between communities on the system um in terms of um. As well as you get to maintain the free horizon, which is very heavily relied on by uh all four Calgaryans. And then an enhanced staff service, you basically would be able to scale the types of programs and services that are best needed to. Um I guess really work with community partners and and uh other folks across the city and and working on some of the complexities that we're seeing on the transit system today. Um in terms of uh. A cost, there was a midpoint cost of two hundred and forty-four million dollars capital for uh gates at all stations outside of the seventh avenue corridor and that. Heads that follow with necessity, creation of safety hubs across uh one for each line of the system, the center point of the twenty-nine million dollars. Um number of complexities on Seventh Avenue, closing the system on Seventh Avenue requires the infrastructure investment. Uh closure of the downtown L R T area, barricades not recommended unless you have mind to include really other elements of sculpting of uh really what a future system could look like. Uh if you were putting a new system in today and you were able to integrate these components of the infrastructure. System that's heavily integrated with surrounding communities and surrounding developments that are downtown or. Um access to platform street levels unaffordable. Uh as I mentioned, stations are integrated to the to many properties, buildings, all like. Or we're certainly accessing these buildings through transit care payments because they've become closed spaces. It's not feasible. I would. Maybe the city at risk for claims. Uh we have two blocks where it's where it is stationed, two anchor points to end the seven. That if you're making a closed uh system on City Hall and at downtown us, you're really blocking out that block from the public realm. Um and then the closest that creates a sidewalk course, building uh privileges, promoting platforms, which would be expected to be hazardous. Well, maybe a very difficult uh areas to also secure and protect. At times response to in case of there's any particular issue. Response to. Um as mentioned, there was a we did not find a correlation to conversion of barricades, increased transit safety, other transit agencies of barricades. Increased safety related incidents throughout the pandemic and increased complexity with intersecting societal considerations packed in public transit, which really speaks to a lot of work from the previous presentation as well. And we spoke to some of those agencies specifically on this topic and they are having a lot of the same uh societal uh considerations over on their systems. A block close system is not feasible in the scope and context of the study, primarily in terms of your urban integration challenges, operational challenges. Uh creation of a partially closed system is to be just technically feasible, but not recommended is would require substantial modifications to most existing stations. Most significant type of risks is not supported by city business units, partner agencies, base service providers, and each city partners part of the study. Uh the city could explore and enhance that flow associated infrastructure specified option three and this could be included as part of her consideration in the city's whole this very transit strategy. Um Aaron's walked us through uh the recommendations and I think at that point uh have it to any questions.
Right. Thank you very much. Um lots of information there and uh. It's nice to see it in the two pieces. The one specific question that's been asked more than once before. About whether we could enclose uh Calgary's transit and the second overall safety. Um uh my other comment is I really like to, I like seeing the fact that you did go outside of just specifically. Um transit and talk about um homeless and wellness and the the other things that are feeding into that. That was uh. Very helpful. Maybe we'll get messages out there at the end of the day. Um so we'll go to some questions and discussions. So Commissioner Campbell, please go ahead.
Thanks very much, Chair. Um thank you very much for the presentation. Um I um. I think his deputy topic was in was in was intimating. Yes, I did read all of it. Um and I really liked the schematics. Um the I thought the focus areas were uh really, really important as Chair Cornet has just said. Uh customer and staff safety, substance use, housing and supports and mental health and. Those are all the issues that are the concerns and the policy priorities that are driving this. Um when you spoke about um equity and ensuring it met equity um thresholds. I didn't hear a discussion around hours of operation. Um was there some consideration put into the analysis? That covered hours of operation um of of the transit system?
Sorry about that. Uh thank you, Commissioner, for the question. We looked at equity for the close system study. We looked at uh passenger accessibility. It's one component, but also we looked at different programs the city has uh in terms of uh the pick program, which is a program that provides seventy thousand. Uh there are fare tickets over to community service organizations. We looked at the impact of this program when it comes to the the fair entry program at the city. Um in terms of uh hours of service, we did not look at, we did not look at that, but there is definitely an equity. Then over the years, when it comes to hours of service, access to service and frequency of service, but that's also like that we looked at the scope of the study. Ours was very much about. The impact to existing programs that we have at the city and then also uh the accessibility components to it as well.
Thank you. Um the recommendations um from a Calgary perspective for safety. Do those recommendations translate for buses and Calgary access as well, or is it exclusively L R T?
And transit safety recommendations could be transmitted over to uh. Uh the bus system for sure and accessibility. It's the transit safety plan would be a holistic look at all services that are provided. Uh the challenge right now across the country is that we have a number of transit agencies have um a lot of programs. That have different outcomes on different components, what they're trying to achieve in terms of safety and what we're recommending is really having everything in a in a highly visible. Um public document that also allows a conversation on kind of resourcing partnership development by management. And a lot of those recommendations could be transmitted over to other modes as well. Simon did reference the. Complexes that we're seeing on the ramp transit systems, but I've worked out you across the country, bus based systems, even in smaller communities under a hundred thousand are having the same. Complexity when it comes to safety and a lot of them would really transmit over to that as well.
Good. Thank you. And my last question, um with respect to the resources that are planned, um the increased transit officers or staff. Um for increased visibility on the transit system. Um is it anticipated that one, where the where do we have capacity to actually hot to bring onboard these resources? And then second, will they have the anti-racism training, the de-escalation training? Um along with the training to know when to bring in medical resources and crisis teams to support um individuals. Again, recognizing that the primary drivers of the concerns we have right now are safety, housing, substance use and mental health.
Commissioner, for the question, I can take a stab at that and then Chief Kuhn as well, I'm sure will follow up. Part of the work on the transit safety strategy is looking at just that, the resources required to address. Those recommendations and not just from an enforcement perspective, but uh also the outreach side of the house. So. I know there's conversation right now ongoing about that and there's a plan to bring that report back in Q three uh to city council, but uh.
Yeah, absolutely. Just to to provide context to your other question around capacity with the recommendations that we put forward. They do align with our ability to onboard and train uh within the city administration structure for the security and peace officer piece. Um but obviously we recognize that that any kind of integrated model going forward is that collaborative uh piece with our partner C P S. So. From the recommendations that are here before council, we have the capacity to onboard and similar to what D C topic said with our our strategy will encompass the other recommendations that are a part of David's period and the cute recommendations.
Thanks, Chair. Great. Thank you very much. Um good responses. Um Commissioner Rossell.
And the C T A recommendations include comments about ensuring that bylaws are in place that give police. The ability to curb dangerous and unlawful behavior. And I know that isn't isn't the main focus as Commissioner Campbell has has said, but obviously there are issues there. And I was wondering on the C P F side, do you feel that the platforms that are in place are helpful or are there changes that would be useful? In in helping to make sure that you can can curb. Bad behavior at on transit.
Thanks. Did you did you answer the question? Um Commissioner Rossell, your uh your voice was doing the telephone thing where it scrambles it slightly. But I think we got your your question. Did did that come across properly?
Uh I heard the question. Um Simon, do you want to maybe take the first part of the question? I I have an answer to it, but maybe Simon, if you want to go first.
Well, I uh maybe I missed some of it, but I I think the and so maybe you can clarify if I missed part of it, but I thought it was uh whether. Uh Calgary Police Services specifically has the tools. Is that, am I correct about that?
Yeah, the question was, eh, the recommendations are talking about making sure that that are bylaws in place that allows. How police services to to curb dangerous and unlawful behavior, I think is what I read. Um wondering is if CPS feels that the right bylaws are in place or that if they're helpful or there are changes that would be helpful.
Yeah, so I would maybe. Just go, I I would maybe defer to Calgary Police Services to make that assessment for their specific case.
Question for CPS.
Yeah, sure, we can respond to that. Uh. The the bylaws that are in place do give us some powers and the chief, and I'm sure would uh respond to that as well. Uh looking at all of them and whether they effectively allow us to manage uh every all the issues that we're seeing on on the transit system. I think that's where there probably are some opportunities for some bylaw change. Uh but uh Aaron, from your perspective, from the peace officer enforcement, uh what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I would agree. We we have the the tools, uh again, as the transit safety issue has evolved, so has the issues on the transit system. So when we. Look at our original mandates years ago around ferry evasion and we look at the complexities of the issues that we see today. Um as part of the the strategy, we're working with Calgary Police Services is also identify those opportunities to go back um and look for. Evolution in the bylaw, if there is needs for that, but even our approach to some of the the issues on the transit system, even from the peace officer lens, has transitioned from ferry evasion to more of a mood ordering. Um a stance on the system. So we want everyone to access the system that's allowed to access the system, but when you're done, please move along from the system. So we're looking at the bylaws. And how does that support us in that uh new enforcement stance?
Oh, you're on mute, Teresa. Sorry. Okay, so your your sound, your sound is is not helping you right now, but um we we appreciate the question, so thank you. Um Commissioner Mallon, I just want to comment that Commissioner Mallon is speaking to us from England right now. And uh Commissioner Tangue is also on the East Coast, I believe, so the few people are. Doing their, making best efforts to get in here today. So Commissioner Mallon, please go ahead. And you're on mute.
Thanks. I was interested in your in your deliberations, whether or not any consideration was given to altering or developing perhaps a new. Method of of control or management or leadership for all these resources that we're going to pour into this system. We're going to have police, we're going to have lots more transit officers, community partners, perhaps A H S, any number of partners and. I've heard in the past that people don't always even operate on the same emergency channels and I'm concerned about. Um is anybody going to be in charge or are we going to have everybody with their own power structures and decision-making? Like, how are we really going to address the the problems in the moment? If we don't have a really coordinated um. Maybe single point of decision-making for some things. Has any consideration been given to how that might work?
Uh great point, Commissioner. Uh and there is discussion going on about that. Uh certainly with the city's restructure last year where uh. Aaron's team moved under emergency management to be safety and then we have the transit side more around mobility uh piece. We are identifying opportunities to work more effectively, not just across agency, but within. City departments, you talk about the radio channels, you talk about dispatch, you talk about record management. All of those things need to probably be addressed. And right now we're we're working in a very integrated way to do that. Uh I'd say we have a very positive working relationship with our city partners. And regardless of who's in charge, ultimately we need to work well together and we're actively doing that. And we'll talk a bit about that in the public safety or our uh save public spaces action plan as well around the framework for that, but uh Aaron, anything to you?
I I agree. We're working very collaboratively on that.
I think you. Okay, thank you very much. Uh Commissioner North, again.
Uh thank you, Chair. Uh my question just is will focus down into this. Uh the recommended app, like I I heard that there's going to be some uh some advocacy happening to the province. With regard to resources to mental health, to the uh homeless situation. Um I was just a little bit confused as to how this was. Going to happen. Is it going to happen through this committee? Has it been perceived if if it's going to happen through city council? You know, just just a little bit of a clarification on who's going to be advocating and bringing forward these needs for resources.
I can maybe uh start by answering that question. So yeah, I mean, the. Uh the Q to task force recommendations were developed by the National Task Force. And those, the the ones that require provincial or federal advocacy, I think, you know, Q to would be leading for a large part. We're we're looking at partnering with different organizations across the country to do that. Um to help get those uh services uh pushed in different places. I hope that that answers your question.
Is there also going to be like some kind of public transparency to ensure that these uh resources are being asked and received by the cities?
Well, that will be, I I mean, we have to start somewhere, uh start by asking and putting together an action plan. So I think that's a that's a. Good recommendation and something we can look at as we develop more of the operational side of the recommendations and how we look to. To push them forward and and get them hopefully advocated for and put in place.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Um to provide a city of Calgary lens to that answer. Um we are going to be working to unpack some of the Q to recommendations and identify which. We are going to be working to unpack some of the Q to recommendations and identify which which areas this particular report covers. And then there's going to be some other actions that we take separate from these recommendations, fair gate, that will stimulate work throughout our organization and probably include some of our intergovernmental affairs colleagues that will then have worked to engage the province on 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 this content as well. So there'll be more than one channel for this conversation to 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 continue on with.
Thank you. And maybe I could just jump in here just for a minute, just to add on to that comment. One of the things we found was some of the large reports that the services had over the few number of years, use of force and things like that, and the service optimization review, where you have so many different groups working at it, while it's very helpful to have various channels of communication in order to actually get a coherent plan together and make sure all of the pieces move because it's not going to happen over six months or a year. I just just to emphasize that it would be. I I think one of the things that 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 we would be looking at is sort of how is this all tied together? And and how do we make sure that, you know, it's going to be over a period of several years? How do these things get pushed forward? Because going at a piecemeal is is a little bit of a risk in terms of not having it integrated and systemic like it should be. So anyhow, just an additional comment, I think, building on what was what was just said.
Sure, that's a great point. I think from the CBS perspective here, we're working very closely with with the team at the city and Aaron's group there. And then also, we're learning a lot of lessons right now from the work that's being done in the safe public spaces group with an integrated model of where we're doing. And I think the plan is and the timing is that we're going to go forward with, you know, some sort of proposal around a sustainable integrated model for Q three. So I think from a commission perspective, that's where you'd be watching some of the other pieces that Sharon was speaking about there with the Q to reports and stuff like that, that'll all move, I think, in tandem. But really, you know, we're working on on kind of the the public safety or the the people side of that. So I think it'll all go. But I but I think there's just a piece of it the commission needs to keep eyes on it. That's probably it. And it'll it'll continue to develop between now and Q three. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Sorry. Thanks. Sorry. Was there other comment there? No? Okay. Commissioner Tangay.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I'm in a hotel and, you know, wifi is the best here. Thank you for a really detailed report. Really appreciate it. Comment kind of as much as a question was about the housing recommendations. There was a recommendation for immediate need for housing first, which most experts would argue against. When we look in in Vancouver, forty four percent of overdoses occurred in a housing first facility. Whether it was the shelter, a social house, an SRO. In New York, fifty six percent of overdoses occurred in those facilities. Most would argue that you need supportive housing with wraparound services from health, as harm reduction, mental health, addiction services. And it was interesting to see that as a medium term. So just kind of thoughts of of where that idea kind of came from, where most advocates for people living without a home, most advocates from harm reduction, most advocates from addiction services would probably argue against that. And just wanted to to kind of throw that out there.
The the question and thoughts on that. The housing ones are probably some of our complex ones, recommendations that are in the documents. And when we were developing them, we did speak to the Federation of Municipalities on this particular one because housing is is a very complex file that does intersect with this conversation on transit and some of the other complexities we see from societal response to this. One of the things that the reason why the second recommendation on wraparound supports is more of a medium term is that it's one thing to build the housing, it's another thing to actually get the resources, the training, the the individuals in place for that. I am a land use planner by trade that works in transit and also I have working on a housing policy project right now. And there's a lot of complexities to that. But we wanted to have a conversation of if you have a place to stay that is safe, that is going to be helpful. If you have a place to say that is safe, that has the proper wraparound support services, I think that will get us more to success. What's happening right now is that we have individuals, and I've seen this. Like when I went through with the CPS members and with the hot team, and then I probably personally spoke about twenty five people that are sheltering in place on the system is that people are sheltering in place, this is because they have nowhere else to go. Or they or they choose to because they personally feel safe. Or there's other parameters around that in terms of social connectivity, in terms of how someone that uses substances, who they use it with. So yeah, the the premise of the of the of those housing ones is one. If you we want to provide a safe place for you to be, but two, the wraparound services, my opinion, are just as important.
Great. Thank you for that. Commissioner Siddiqui.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you all for a very, very detailed report and for all of you taking part in the different pieces. My question is around couple of things, I guess. Number one, when will you review this again? So I know that you're making these recommendations. What if things don't aren't working? Like, is there a way to make some changes quickly? Is this something that you all will look at again in five years from now? Or because I'm I'm just curious, like, how often do do these items get reviewed?
I think you're referencing the the first report, the national recommendations, correct?
Correct.
So one, that work advanced largely because it was a body of work. And that's there's still lots of work to undergo on that in terms of the action plan, advocacy plan, and how individual municipalities and trans systems address some of those components. One of the things that we wanted to to document is the importance of measurement, the importance of of understanding how these programs work, how they need to be refined, how they may need to be realigned or changed or recalibrated on that. And right now, we don't have a consistent data framework across the country. That's a huge conversation in terms of if someone said, I want to understand how we are measuring against other cities. I actually can't give you that answer. I give you elements of that answer depending on data sets, depending on the programs to have in place. But we wanted to really provide some guidance on and where the agencies have said when speaking to myself and others who are developing this work is that we need a bit of a north star when it comes to measurement, when it comes to metrics, when it comes to our ability to create these programs. And we do have measurements in places of certain components. The city does have a weekly report, I'm aware of, through their transit public safety and some of the measurement of these metrics. But to have a consistent framework to have that so you can change these programs if they don't work right now and what accelerated the work on the recommendations that we had some very severe high impact incidents on transit. And we're at the point right now where you need to put out programs in place. But we're also creating evaluation at the same time. And we want to have a more measured approach and really evaluating those components together and having a really essentialized method of way to do so. So I I kind of said a lot on that particular piece, but we wanted to provide at least some sort of a structure and how it's built out by the city and others is is really up to that. But that's something that we wanted to really point on. And that's a further conversation. Now the work is that will be coming. The city wants to add anything?
Just to provide a context, Commissioner, that one of the things that we've recognized even before this report went to council is that we we recognize the need to pivot. As David referred to, there's several incidents that required us to recognize that we needed to to review what we were doing. We also last year, through the emergency funding that was approved through council, took the opportunity to look at the additional resources and 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 really ask the question, what does success look like? That's really where we started to look at our relationship with CPS, the more integrated approach, recognizing that the issues on transit, if we do not work collaboratively on that, it will have an impact to the community through displacement. And so to your question about evaluation, we have been evaluating how we've been historically dealing with the transit safety file and working with CPS on the community, how the impact of the community. And so we're actually in that evaluation right now. And the strategy when we report it back to council will have opportunities for us to measure success in a new way. And as we start to move down that road to a more integrated service model with Calgary Police Service and our other partner agencies, we'll be able to create a new measure of success. And to your point, reevaluate and see that this is the right direction. But we realize this is a new new direction for us to go, not only with CPS, but even with transit safety inside city administration.
So I'm the least data commissioner on here, but I'm going to ask a data question. So when do you plan on having all these new data items put in place? And and these measurements set, like, is there a timeline, like, six months from now, a year? Because I'm I'm curious, because it's I appreciate the fact that you have to pivot quickly, and I get that, and I can see why. But how do we know that this is working? And how do we do this soon enough so that you know, that it's good for our communities?
Absolutely. So we we are measuring data. And and that's really where, while we're building the strategy and we're working in cooperation, we recognize that there are two different kind of areas that are collecting data through the recommendations that David was realized there's fire data, CPS data, transit data. And so what we're doing is is using some of our integrated response to to assess how is that success looking? Well, also looking at while we've changed our deployment of of officers, what are the impacts? So we we are doing it as quickly as we possibly can to formalize that measure of success. It's really where the strategy comes in. And and that DC Telphic had referred to this is that's when we're looking at our records management, our CADs, our radio communication. Once we start aligning those systems, we'll have a more concise metrics to measure from. So we are seeing the improvements now through our internal measures. But we we do recognize that there is some deep conflicting of information that we're going to need to do. And that's why the integrated approach is where we truly stand with Calgary Police Service, that it needs to be collaborative. And we're hopeful that that will come through on the strategy in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Second question. That grid or matrix that you had and how much everything costs? The fully closed, the half closed, the the staffing piece. I understand that the other items are very expensive and totally. But the expanded staff piece, I mean, that's quite costly as well. And so how will you get the resources? Because we all know it's hard to train up like, you know, officers, transit, all that quickly to get them to do what we need to do. So I find, and it's expensive too, once you have these bodies to train them and to do everything, and then the retention and all those pieces. So where does that funding come from? And do you have an idea of what you need? And who who funds that? Is that something that will come from the city, from you, from CP? Like from the police, from us, etc.?
Yeah. So in the recommendations, we ask for one time funding for the remainder of the year to begin the recruitment process. And we also signal to our council that there will be an ask of the annualized amount for next year and and in future years. There's also, we're also signaling through executive committee conversations with council that we probably expect an additional investment to come as part of the budget process. And that's for our internal city spend, that's separate from any request that may be coming from the commission. So I think I'll let.
Thanks, Sharon. Yeah, the resourcing for this, we're working with Aaron to build out the strategy and what the deployment model would look like. As he mentioned, they're changing the deployment model for peace officers on the system. And with the growth, we need to see how we would best integrate into that. At this time, I don't have a defined number or what that would look like. But there there was some talk provincially around some funding. And we have yet to realize or see if that's going to be in place. So there's a lot of variables in play right now that we would have to assess before we commit to that. But that's why we'll do the work to define it to be as efficient and effective as we can in an integrated system.
Great. Thank you all. I look forward to to sort of getting those numbers once you have them, just, you know, just to see where we're going. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks, Chair. Just wanted to provide a clarification on my comments earlier and my questions. I use the words housing and substance abuse side by side. And in no way did I intend to or mean to infer that being unhoused is correlated with substance abuse. Those two, for me, are individually distinct situations. So I I'm hoping that that was understood by everyone on the call as well as as well as within within the the listening audience. The second piece was around the the time of use and hours of operation. I think I was probably a little too light in my in my questioning and going to just take us where where I wanted where I wanted to go. And and I'm not going to hope that you get there. I'm going to actually just lead you there. Now, when we think about hours of operation of a transit system, and and I say this as someone who uses transit in this in this city regularly, what ends up for me, what ends up happening is that you actually eliminate a portion of the population who needs transit between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM. And you create a safety issue for those folks who do have no other option. I have other options. There are folks who have no other options but transit between midnight and 5:00 AM. And so there is an equity issue there as well as a safety issue. If you're unaware that transit does not operate in those hours, the only time we choose to do that, and it is a choice that we make, is during the the ten day carnival in in July.
So we are going to revisit our service levels. We have reduced our service levels through the pandemic because of because of the reduced revenues. And we're currently in the process of hiring over eight hundred operators. We're also proposing next week coming to council is our route ahead strategy, which talks about frequent cross town connections, not only on our sea train, but on bus as well. And that is our directly related to our our wanting to support an equitable transit system for for Calgarians. Have we considered keeping the system open twenty four seven? We have had that conversation. Are we resourced to do it at this time? We are not. So we'll have to be, we'll also, along with a safety strategy coming in September, there's actually a route ahead implementation plan that will be coming forward that will that will look to address better service across the city.
Thank you very much for that. I think when you do conduct that particular piece of the study, please and think, please consider gender race analysis, as well as race based analysis of those results and recommendations. That that particular such that particular safety issue and that particular access and equity issue for hours of service is distinct and unique to specific communities within Calgary. And and that's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And and thank you for that clarification and emphasis. I think it's important. So I'm going to move on. I don't see any more questions at this point. We have three more reports in the public session. The next two are presentations on the current crime trends. The first focuses on the trends being seen in investigative areas of the service. And the second will focus on the trends impacting frontline offices, officers. So I will pass that back to the Calgary Police Service. So please take it over.
Once it will just take two minutes. Thanks to our guests for coming in and actually. Very helpful. Thanks so much. We're just going to do another switch around here and we'll be right back.
Oh, you're on mute. I don't know if you intend to be.
Den to be Joe's working the button. And I think he's a little bit, as he pointed out, a little bit out of practice. Anyway, we're back.
You say he's just out of practice. Where's Clarion? You need her.
Hey, that's a really good question, isn't it? Right here. I'm going to have it over firstly to. I'm going to have it over firstly, talking deputy bail up and then he'll pass directly to, uh, deputy topic to cover firstly, as you mentioned. Your own state of support and then the community-based police society.
Thank you, Chief, and, uh, thank you, everybody. I'm just filling in for Deputy Chief Cook, who's on training this week. So I'll start with some key points. While the number of shootings in Calgary remain lower. Then during the same period last year, we get to focus on our resources to address recent public displays of gun violence. We've also concluded several significant drug trafficking investigations and targeted both organized crime element of drug trafficking as well as street level drug trafficking. That was occurring on transit. Can you guys hear me before I get into the same loop that I was in before, where, okay. We have also advanced our partnerships with the private industry to lead the way in crypto crime investigations and enforcement to the creation of an investigative training center and a blockchain-specific investigations team. And while we've seen a decrease in commercial robberies, we've noted a five-year high in personal robberies. Through excellent investigative work, we have laid charges against the group of people who were responsible during robberies. So I'll get into some of these details right now. As of May 15, 2023, there have been 39 shootings in Calgary, which is a 33% decrease from during the same period, time period in 2022. So far this year, 139 crime guns have been seized, including 44 in April and 13 in May. She's up, uh, to May 15th of this year. This is down from 194 seized by this point in the year 2022. Crime guns include firearms that were unlawfully used, possessed, or stored. Beginning of April, 2023, the organized crime and offender management section announced charges as well as the seizure of more than 90 kilos of cocaine. This is a four-month-long investigation across Canada drug trafficking network. The investigation involved the interception of two vehicles that, uh, traveling between Calgary from Vancouver, from Calgary to Vancouver, or from Vancouver to Calgary. One of the vehicles was being transported on a flatbed tow truck when it was intercepted. Both vehicles were equipped with aftermarket hidden compartments that were welded into the vehicle frames and operated, were operated by heavy relay switches and hydraulics. A Calgary man and a straight man are now facing charges. Uh, at the end of March, 2023, our drug undercover street team. Also announced the conclusion of a three-week undercover drug trafficking operation. Targeting the C train lines, which resulted in 40 people facing 268 criminal charges. The purpose of the operation is to disrupt drug trafficking in these locations by arresting drug traffickers. And imposing conditions on their release, hoping that we would be able to deter further activity with those conditions. Recognizing that some of the drug traffickers are also addicts, we also provide resources to those vulnerable individuals in tandem with enforcement. That's also worked with the Calgary Drug Treatment Court, ensuring that all of the accused be evaluated to see if CDT C was an option. By doing this, the Calgary Indigenous Court was also notified for culturally appropriate assistance when relevant. In total, there were 58 undercover drug purchases involving 40 of less drug traffickers, fentanyl, methamphetamine, cocaine, morphine. And Xanax were among some of the drugs. Investigators also seized 21 knives, two machetes, bear spray, a handgun, a BB gun, and two airsoft pistols. Uh, we've had to make some last-minute changes to our homicide updates, but as of, uh, today, we had had eight homicides this year in the city of Calgary. With the last one, um, occurring on May 25th. By comparison, this time last year, we had 13 homicides. Of the homicides we've had this year, we've had five, three are unsolved, so that's 63% clearance rate, which is a good start for us for this year's homicide. Cyber in, is, uh. Is an area that we're, we're doing our best to step into boldly. In April of 2022, we entered into a unique partnership with Chainalysis. That will result in the creation of a Western Canada Cryptocurrency Investigation Center. Which will serve as an international training hub for law enforcement, allow police to proactively learn about emerging cryptocurrency and cybercrime. Trends and utilize innovative investigative techniques to ensure safety exists. The creation and inflammation of this center will strengthen our ability to ensure the public safety. Of our citizens and allow for proactive policing and enhanced technical skills and expert training resources for our law enforcement. Investigate our partners through Calgary and Southern Alberta. In addition, the Calgary Police Service Cyber President Chain Analysis created a blockchain investigative team. So to our, to our knowledge. This is the only blockchain investigative team standalone team in municipal agency in Canada. Which is dedicated to support cryptocurrency and blockchain-related investigations. While we are seeing a downward trend in commercial robberies, we're seeing a much higher than average number of personal robberies. I'm not sure if this, if you guys are. At the end of April, pardon me, in March, we hit a five-year high with 65 total personal robberies. This is in line with the trends we're seeing for overall violence, non-domestic violence. As there is also an increase in assaults and assaults of the weapon. At the end of April, 2023, our robbery unit announced that five youths had been charged with 76 offenses in relation to 11 pharmacy robberies. Carjacking robberies and personal robberies that occurred between June 2022 and January of 2023. In March, 2023, we also had two bank robberies, which were committed by the same offender. After being arrested for the first robbery, the offender was released on bail, at which time he committed the second robbery. The robbery unit worked with bank employees to provide refresher training on how to keep themselves safe in situations. Of note, in April, 2023, we had zero pharmacy. Cannabis store or bank robberies. Year-to-date, there have been five in total, three financial. One and one each of pharmacy and cannabis store. We have, however, seen a recent resurgence in buy-sell offenses where victims are targeted via online advertisement. For comparison, by this time last year, we were sitting at 18 pharmacy robberies from here. Finally, I'll look at our arson, I'll give you an updated arson. Our arson unit is best to get through as far as March. Two of which were fatal, both fatalities and health concerns are present. In third case, it is believed that the occupants were attempting to heat a home with heaters, which led to a fire. Finally, the widely-publicized house explosion that occurred in Marlborough in late March of 2023 was a result of a natural gas leak. Was found to be accidental. 10 occupants were sent to the hospital, but all survived.
From the Bureau of Community Police, just to expand on that, and I know you have the report, which has a lot of details, so I won't get into all of it in the interest of time. But I will highlight a few items. Uh, of course, we're paying close attention to the uptick in violence, uh, over the, over the usual, and we're responding to that across all districts. Of that, we saw assaults see a notable increase while others, other types of violence had a mild decrease. Uh, in April, of note, the domestic violence trending is still continuing where the domestic violence is trending down, but domestic reporting is trending up. That uptick in reporting is, we see as a positive in that, uh, people are calling us before it escalates to violence. The trend around residential and commercial break and enters continues to be, uh, low, which is, is good. We have focused on that. We believe a portion of that is due to focus on prolific offenders who commit break and enter series. Uh, holding them accountable and ensuring that they're in custody and we respond to that on a regular basis. We see similar with vehicle theft trending down, car prowling trending down, and disorder having a mild downward trend. Although I should note on the, on the disorder component. With the work that we're doing on diversion straight to 211, there could be some loss of data in relation to that. So that it may be a bit of an artificial, uh, decreased trend there. Uh, I won't get into shootings because Ryan dealt with that. I'll spend most of the time speaking about the safe public spaces action plan and Cher, thanks for referencing that. Uh, we took great emphasis over the last month and a half to focus on public spaces, starting with transit locations. Especially during peak times, both in the morning and afternoon into the evening, to ensure we had a high visible presence. You probably noted that on social media and tried to communicate that publicly around our efforts. Uh, we have received some very positive feedback about that. That was the first phase of the, uh, operation of that safe public spaces action plan. That plan, and I included a, a graphic that shows the, uh, structure for that. Really involves the joint management team with us and other city partners, but also external partners in social serving agencies. Uh, Superintendent Rashid is connected in as well. He's a part of that group. And we work with the city on ensuring that we can address the right issues with the right resources. We have a strategic command team, myself included, uh, city representation that, that is involved in that to, to support that work. And it's really through three tiers, one being enforcement, the second being outreach, and the third being advocacy. And we see a strong advocacy component coming forward as we work through this. The first month or so was focused really on transit safety because we saw the need there right away. We also anticipated potential displacement as we focused our attention there into other public spaces across the city. So you probably saw on social media, the workaround encampments that started in District One and District Two and is continuing. Uh, we've mapped that with hawks across, uh, the city around where the major encampments are that we need to focus on. Leading with compassion where appropriate, and we, when we see criminal activity, we're going to deal with that too. So our, our next phase here is really focusing on, on those areas, but being responsive, responsive to changes in data. Uh, we've developed a dashboard internally around LRT safety, uh, so we can see trends. Uh, you, we've noted our actions, we're tracking all the actions of our officers doing proactive work in those areas. And I can say 75% of those calls in the month of April were proactive calls by our members attending to those locations. And 25% were, were calls from the public. So we're seeing some good impact there. And I think it's really a good approach to, to focus on that. We're trying to communicate publicly, which I think is a really important partnership, not just ourselves, but with, uh, media outlets as well. Uh, we always hear about the bad news that happens, the, the tragic stories that happen. But we have to offset that with some of the good work and some of the positive things that we're seeing happening. So that work will continue. Uh, we have that structure in place and we'll be reporting on it. We've been sending snapshot updates to commission, also to our city partners to show where we're at. And looking for further opportunities for inspiration. So just a high-level overview of that public spaces action plan. Which we're hoping to continue and, and have more positive results. Uh, Operation Crest, I'll touch on that, uh, just quickly because today was actually the final day of Operation Crest. That's the work with the provincial sheriffs in our beats in District One. Uh, we've worked through that, uh, and certainly seen value in that partnership. Now we move into the phase of evaluation of that component. Which will be somewhat quantitative on what was the impact, but also qualitative with our partners, uh, in the downtown core. Did they see an impact? What was the impact? And also we love to do a survey both internally with our EPS members who participated. And the members of the sheriffs who participated to see, uh, how did they feel it went? Is this what can we do to improve if we consider doing this into the future? Uh, so that's, that's been positive. Out of that as well, the, the statistics have shown that, you know, we, we did a lot of interactions through that, through that work. Uh, addressed 920 outstanding arrest warrants and, and addressed a number of things, providing people with supports and tech into services and the core. The traffic safety on that front, uh, you see the numbers on the traffic service requests, they're trending up. We've been responsive to, uh, needs around the traffic safety areas in line with the provincial traffic enforcement calendar. April was speeding, so for those that got speeding tickets, uh, it's a necessary evil and we're trying to curb that behavior. You'll see some examples of the high-risk behaviors that we've highlighted in the report. Uh, going extreme speeds and we're working on some advocacy there around, you know, potential legislative, legislative changes around excessive speed, et cetera. Uh, overall, the street racing, we responded to very quickly in regards to that work with community and diverting resources with the citywide approach. So should that issue move to another part of the city, we will be responsive to that. And we were very active on social media to not only warn people in advance. But also show the accountability piece so that they know if you choose to do that and engage in that behavior, which is very high-risk, very dangerous. You can expect to be held accountable to the highest degree that we can. So I'll leave it there, uh, and certainly open to any questions.
Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thanks for both of those reports. Um, thanks, Chair, for acknowledgement. I've got two questions. One, I think, is the obvious question that comes up from the, the transit initiatives. And that is, um, the comment that some of the incidents are now and issues are moving into the communities around that area. And there was a vague kind of, um. Uh, allusion to what, how you're going to approach that move into the communities around. I, I just wonder if you could elaborate on that. And the second, uh, question relates to. You, you know, we, we had a limited. Understanding of how we were going to use those sheriffs. You did use them, they're now stopped. So there is going to be a void in the next little while that the public will have seen, like, where did the sheriffs go and that sort of thing? So how are you coping with that, kind of the stopping of that program? So those two questions, move into community and the sheriff's stopping.
Thanks very much for the question. They're both really good and valid questions. Uh, the work of our district analysts in looking at the data around what we're seeing as far as movement and transition of crime and social disorder. Is going to be how we'll lead, lead that approach and we'll, we'll move resources and focus our efforts where they're needed. Uh, we've got great expertise in that regard. Uh, so that will continue and the safe public spaces action plan is consistent with that. So we anticipated that even when we started with the focus on transit. So there was additional focus on other areas. That's why the encampment work already started before we waited for sort of the end of phase one. So we will be responsive, uh, based on the data that we see. So we encourage, uh. Community input on that. One of the things with Operation Crest and the work with the sheriffs, it wasn't just our data, our internal data. We were liaising with the downtown association and other business groups in, in the core to get their feedback. Sometimes things go unreported and we want to capture that as well. So as we assess that movement port, we will move and adjust. We know that we have to cover a lot of ground, uh, but we're ready to do that.
All right, perhaps you could address that, the, now that the sheriffs are gone, uh, the communication to the community?
You bet. So, uh, in conjunction with the conclusion of that, there will be follow-up with the, the community, uh, business associations and the groups around the downtown core. A, to get their feedback on how things went, but also to reassure them that we, we will have resources to respond, uh, to support that, uh, if, as needed. And we'll be watching that too. We know we have a lot of events going on over the summer that will occur in District One, uh, upcoming this weekend included. So, uh, there's, we will be responsive to that. They'll see a lot of police presence regardless.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much. Um, Commissioner Lunge Proctor.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the report. Um, just a, a couple of questions. Thinking about the, um, the increase in, uh, or in relation to the increase in violent crime and, and, um, we've had a lot of discussion. Uh, over time about offender management and the resources, um, that consumes at CPS. Uh, can you comment on what your, how you anticipate the new bill reform? Uh, laws to impact operations on the ground?
Maybe if, if anyone wants to supplement, and it can. So as part of a meeting today, actually, uh. On law amendment, where it was addressed nationally, uh, we were meeting the latest, um, DLC 48. Repetitions, just to see if policing is satisfied with, with how they, they currently stand. And we have it, we have about a 10-day window. We're, we're one of the agencies that's volunteered to provide direct feedback, uh, in that space. But we'd like to see, I think, what everyone in this room, which is generally agreed is that we're hoping that. This allows us to better, um, manage criminality in our, in our community. So instead of that continual revolving door where we feel frustration when we make an arrest, like the example I gave where we, somebody robs a bank in the morning. The police officers are probably still doing paperwork on that arrest and that person is released to maybe the second bank robbery in the afternoon. Is something we'd like to gain. Put a little more bonus on this, on the justice system itself. To be responsible for the decisions made in catch and release. So in short, we're hoping that, that this will slow, um. Slow the, the amount of people that, slowly, bad guys from getting back into the community, I guess. Would be the simplest thing, based on the severity and the seriousness of that, that's with respect to public safety. I don't know if anybody else can add anything. It's dead, I'm quick, Commissioner, but, uh, from the, from the perspective of the Association of Chiefs of Police. We're obviously going to keep looking at this. It's not as though, you know, we advocated along with, you know, the premiers and the commissions and cities and everybody, the associations. Uh, and now that there's been an announcement, it's like, well, okay, we're done. I think it's an ongoing conversation and I'm glad to hear Ryan's comment about us providing data with respect to what we're seeing and whether or not it's working. But I think it, it, it is in the implementation of it and how, uh, what we see, you know, in terms of. What we, what we would sort of brand as common sense, uh, with respect to some of the offenders that are going through. Um, and I guess just seeing again how it's implemented and what in fact it makes. So early days, I'm glad we're keeping track, but again, we'll make sure that it has. So early days, I'm glad we're keeping track, but again, we'll make sure that it has the impact as intended. And if not, we'll be advocating further.
Thanks to you both for that. I appreciate it. And appreciated as early days and something, something to keep track of in terms of whether it went far enough. Kudos to you. The second question is around the crypto and cyber, and kudos to you again for being a leader nationally. This also is a, is a theme in terms of your, your new training center around blockchain. And my question is just, how, what is the community outreach going to look like in this respect? How, how are you going to interface or, or, you know, share this with the community?
Thank you for the question. Specific to the blockchain, we had a media release where we explained what it was about, and we went through how we'd be interacting with our first public-private partnership and what the benefits were to us as CPS. What this is, is actually the first, or not the first, one of a few proof-of-concept things we're doing as we explore stepping into the cyber fusion. We bring all of these things, whether it's we're working on, you know, the blockchain, whether we're working with the University of Calgary, whether we're creating a center where we can access the community itself and take the best and the brightest from our community, because the whole concept around this is the old way where the police could just say, hey, don't worry, we've got this, is long past, the space we're behind. And we just have to admit that, and then we have to ask the community for help. So that's not a new concept, so you just think, I've used this before. So if you think, you know, a hundred years ago, when somebody stole a bunch of horses, you only had one law person, they deputized a bunch of people in our community, and they went out and ate it. The rest of the people were responsible. So in this case, we have to go out and do it a little differently. We're working with our legal department in that area to see if we can create a legal framework where we can take people from the city, corporations, or just good public safety partners, and bring them into a place where we can all work on this together. We are early stages in this, but we realize that we have to do it. And this bit team and this concept of blockchain is going to be the first in that space. And so far as city unit, in the absence of anything else, we're doing something that we think is important. We're engaging our provincial partners and national partners, we're talking to everybody that'll listen. It's just that we have to balance the reality that we have finite resources here to do it. So over the next little bit, you'll see other things come up. We've been very supported by our command chain, we feel very supported by you as our civilian oversight. But we're stepping into this area with that purpose of creating a, you know, a community of practice or a place where, a center of excellence for all of these issues, from providing something to the average Calgaryan, to providing something for business, to the far end of that spectrum, to having a, a very specialized team of people, whether that's all police officers or a mixture of people from corporate Calgary or university, all working together to protect Calgaryans against things that are happening in the cyberspace. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely, it does. Keep pushing. And again, thank you for the, your continued leadership in this area.
Great. Thank, thank you for all of those reports. And again, it's a good insight into all of the work that goes on in so many areas. Just curious, as some other items come later in the agenda, I wonder if members internal to the service are aware of the Safe Public Spaces Action Plan and the work that's really starting to gel around the partnerships with the city? I know some, certainly some will, but anyhow, it just crossed my mind as we get ready for some of our other surveys to go out. So that's more of a comment and just a thought that went through my head at one point. So with that, unless there's any other comments or questions, we have one more report in this section before we move on to the other shorter reports. A brief update on the anti-racism action plans.
Yeah, and this one over to you, active BC.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm pleased to provide this update on behalf of Stephanie McCollum. So in relation to anti-racism team updates, we're pleased to and excited to welcome Ms. Cynthia Okor as a new member of the Calgary Police Service in the role of CPS Anti-Racism Manager. And Cynthia will start her career with CPS on June fifth this year, and will bring a wealth of professional, academic, and lived experience to our service as we continue with our journey towards equitable service delivery to all our diverse communities. On May ninth, they shared the CPS Anti-Racism Team supported the City of Calgary Anti-Racism Program Team as they presented their anti-racism paper to Mayor Gondak and the city council members. The motion was unanimously carried, and plans are in place for a strategic planning session to further coordinate and better align the anti-racism work with the city and CPS. On May eleventh, the CPS External Anti-Racism Action Committee held their monthly meeting here at CPS headquarters, and this month's action item for discussion focused on race-based data. The presentation and discussion included a historical race base, pardon me, race, race data collection, current state of police race data collection and reporting requirements, CPS data systems and limitations, and race-based data reports produced by Ontario Police Services that is reflected in provincial legislation. Further discussions will continue to assist the CPS and Inform Statistics Canada on the collection and use of race-based data for law enforcement agencies. This is the second term for the External A-RAC with new members added to full vacancies. Exit interviews were conducted with past members who were unable to commit to a second term, some leaving due to family and competing commitments. The theme and feedback provided demonstrated a positive learning experience for them and an opportunity to develop skills in advocacy, community engagement, and leadership. In addition to feedback, it showed that the External A-RAC was advocating for policy changes to combat racism in institutions such as educational institution, workplaces, and law enforcement agencies, collaborating with other organizations and community leaders to promote collective action and to build solidarity in their fight against racism, and promoting two-way education to understand the impacts of racism and the importance of promoting diversity and inclusion. Diversity Resource Team update. The month of May involved many connections and collaborations with community members of our Diversity Resource Team. Within this month, Calgary Police Service honored Canadian Jewish Heritage Month. Books are currently showcased within our CPS library for our Sornet's affiliate members to engage and embrace this learning opportunity, recognizing and celebrating the many contributions Jewish Canadians have made to Canada. On May thirteenth, members of our Diversity Resource Team participated in the twenty-twenty-three dash Mesgrat. Our members were welcomed by the Seec Community, and the parade was a safe and memorable experience for everyone in celebration of the Significance Day holiday. On May seventeenth marked the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia. And as a service, we were proud to show our support for the Calgary's gender and sexually diverse community and give our thanks to the Gender and Sexually Diverse Diversity Advisory Board for their continued guidance and advice and partnership. Community mobilizers. Five community mobilizers officially started their careers with CPS on April seventeenth, and they are the fifth, they're in their fifth week training. That includes building on the mandate of being ambassadors within the community and to promote two-way community engagement and planning to support improved police service designs for Indigenous, Black, and diverse racialized communities. These five community mobilizers are representatives of the African, Asian, Latin American, and gender and sexually diverse communities. Interviews for the Indigenous Community Mobilizers concluded on May seventeenth, and seventy candidates applied for this posting, and ten applicants were interviewed. Four candidates have been selected and have been selected for see through the human resource hiring process. Indigenous Relation Team update. The Indigenous Relations Team is an authorized team within CPS and with an authorized strength of one sergeant and two constables. The team is in the process of building on the foundation built by past and current members who have previously retired, been recently promoted, or returned to frontline policing. The CPS is currently working with human resources to post for one sergeant and two constables to continue our service's ongoing commitment to addressing police-related reconciliation calls to action and missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls' calls for justice. In the month of May, Calgary Police assisted Mayor Gondak and her staff to prepare for the City of Calgary's bid for the twenty-twenty-four North American Indigenous Games. And our Service, Services Police Commission reports on the CPS Indigenous Roadmap, including truth and reconciliation initiatives, were provided to assist Mayor Gondak with what we hope to be a successful bid. Hate Crimes Prevention Team. The Hate Crimes Prevention Team continues to investigate and bring public awareness to hate incidents and hate crimes with the purpose of prevention and support for victims and families. On May second, Hate Crimes Prevention Team investigator Matt Messenger began his feature debut on CPS social media accounts as he connects with the community to talk about hate crimes, their impact, and how to report hate crimes or incidents. The team will be presenting an update to CPC in June to highlight the current trends, what constitutes a hate crime, and barriers to reporting to police. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Commissioner North Pagan.
Thank you for the very informed update. And I really wish well the, the Indigenous officers that have moved on from that department. We're going to really miss working with them frontline, but look forward to working with the new ones that come in. My question is coming from one of the citizens of the Indigenous community who wanted to know oh, they want, they want to know when the department will fill the vacancies for anti-racism roles that they, that have been left open for the past six months, and if you have any updates on that.
Can you clarify? Are you able to clarify which positions they're speaking to or speaking about? Sorry?
I'm assuming, I'm looking at this, I'm assuming it has to do with the advisory committees. I understand you have some vacant roles there that need to be filled and have been open for six months.
I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Rashid, just so he can speak to that.
Yeah, and in turn, I defer to Inspector Robert Martin, only because we have strategic planning around the vacancies on the External and Internal A-RAC as of recent. With the inception of the Community Mobilizer Program, there has been some direction that we've been guided on by our strategic advisor to incorporate some of the mobilizers into A-RAC and then backfill some of those vacancies. So how about you can provide some insight, advice that we've been given in that regard, please?
Yes, we have, thanks, Commissioner North Pagan. We do have a complete, full package with our External A-RAC. We had four additional members that joined our, our team this year. And then, as Superintendent Seec Rashid has said, we plan on layering in our community mobilizers. We have now a plan in place to actually reengage our internal anti-racism action committee. You know, to be frank, we had to have some resources, resource challenges, but now that we have a strategic advisor onboard, now that we have our anti-racism manager onboard, and now we have our nine community mobilizers onboarded as well, we are happy to be able to reengage and actually put a call-out for new interested members to join our Internal A-RAC and continue our work. So I hope I answered the question. That's all the vacancies that I'm aware of, that need to be filled and will be filled, and I'm happy to answer any more questions regarding that.
When are we going to expect the public call-out to happen to replace these roles?
So public call-out for what, Commissioner North Pagan, for the External A-RAC or for the Internal?
Well, for both. It would be nice to know those timelines.
There will be no, there will be no public call-out for the External A-RAC, because we have a full committee, right, of civilians that have joined this for their second term. But for the Internal A-RAC, our plan is to have that call-out within the next couple of months, if not this month, so that we can have a full complement prior to summer, summer ending.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sadeke.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Just a couple of things I want to acknowledge. Number one, you're, the officers that have been out and about over the last couple of months, my social media has been full of pictures of officers and little kids and grown-up kids as well. So thank you for doing that. Again, I think when you see an officer that looks like you, I think that's the best way to reach out to the community. My question is around the community mobilizers. Can you give me just a brief outline of what they're going to do? And how will they come back and interact with the service? And how are they going to interact with their specific communities to make sure that the outreach is even further than what the External A-RAC had before?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Sadeke. It's Seec Rashid here. That's a great question. So as Acting DC Onsester reported, the mobilizers have just finished up their five weeks of training. It's now about embedding them toward vis-à-vis our Diversity Resource Officers to attend some of the many events that you've talked about. Additionally, as grassroots members in the community, they are well-informed to inform the strategic direction of the Calgary Police Service. They are going to be embedded, as Inspector Martin said, within the A-RAC committee that we have, and inform on policy practices and procedures. But really, it's about galvanizing and legitimizing the relationships that we have with all of our diverse communities. As, as you know, we have a finite group of diversity officers, and it's difficult to represent all cross-sections and all demographics within the community. We feel that the community mobilizers will fill that void. Additionally, as Acting DC Onsester said, we're pleased to report that with the inception of the four mobilizers to represent the Indigenous community, we'll be better able to connect with the outlying Indigenous communities, both rural and in urban settings as well, to further reconciliation works. We're excited to do that. So in brief, to answer your question, really, it's about scanning the internal and external environment of the community mobilizers and leveraging those grassroots relationships they have within the community to inform the strategic direction of the Calgary Police Service.
Who do they report into? What's the reporting structure?
Thanks again, Commissioner Sadeke. The reporting structure is in it to the Community Services Section. It's led by a Staff Sergeant, and then received by Inspector Martin, as you know. They'll follow the same reporting chain as our Diversity Resources Team, who have a sergeant as well.
And is the goal to use them for everything then, Superintendent Rashid? Like, would they be going out and doing recruitment? Would they be trying to develop stronger relationships in terms of obtaining information on criminal items? Would it just be every, or are they more sort of going to attend community events and hand out information on DPS, that type of thing?
Yeah, so just a couple of clarifying things. As you're speaking, a thought occurred to me with the inception of our new Anti-Racism Manager that joins us on June the fifth. That Anti-Racism Manager will be working with a Staff Sergeant in the Community Services Section. So to be clear, the Anti-Racism Team, the Diversity Resources Team, and the mobilizers will report up through Managing Over Four, and Staff Sergeant would work that work there. As far as diversity to mobilizers and how they will be utilized in the community, it's important to note for our community members that the mobilizers are not a source of intelligence gatherers for the Calgary Police Service. We know in other jurisdictions, you know, programs like this have been received with some suspicion, where community members feel that we're leveraging community relationships to obtain information or intelligence. But community partners, that is not the case here at the CPS, but they will be used for things like recruiting. They'll be used to inform the service on culturally appropriate ceremonies, rites, and rituals. They'll be used to help interpret some of the culturally competent requirements of the Victims Assistance Support Team during high-profile criminal incidents and the like. So we believe they will be agile, and then will base them the five weeks of training received to be able to be utilized throughout the Calgary Police Service as a community expects.
Thanks, Superintendent.
Okay, thank you very much. And Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. Wanted to thank you both, Superintendent Rashid and Inspector Martin, for the comprehensive report. I, you have a very broad portfolio, and you were able to put in some substantial information that talked about a lot of different things that were happening at a significant pace. So thank you for that. Two, two things. First is the Mass Casualty Report from Nova Scotia. That report is extensive and substantial. It's nine volumes. Don't let anybody joke and tell you it's seven. It's, there's actually three-volume seven, so it's, it's actually nine volumes. But there are some substantial findings with respect to bias and systemic bias and systemic racism that we as a commission and as a service should really take some time to delve into and consider. that we as a commission and as a service should really take some time to delve into and consider. There may be areas where Calgary Police Service actually excels and exceeds the situations, the situation that led to the death and murder of those 22 people in Nova Scotia, particularly where our response and reporting. But I think it's, we just need to create a plan for being able to speak to those recommendations and findings. My last piece is a concern. And I bring it up in the anti-racism section because it deals with misogyny and hate and homophobic hate and transphobic hate. And my concern is that as we come out of this most recent presidential election and given the number of incidents of latent racism and extremism and hate, that folks will be emboldened by that. And how are we planning and preparing to protect Calgarians, all Calgarians in that type of environment?
Thanks, Chair. I'll take those questions and try to answer, just because that's my new area of responsibility around emergency. So, on the Mass Casualty Report, right, seven volumes, thousands of pages, but at the end of the day, there's 157 recommendations. Some of them are applicable to policing, some of them are applicable to the federal government, so we need to sort through all that. The ones that are applicable to policing, we've taken a quick look at those and kind of measured up where we sat as a Calgary Police Service. We are a very well-prepared organization when it comes to these types of events. Those of you that have done your ride-alongs, have had an opportunity to visit the RQOC. In addition to that, you've had the opportunity to visit the support section with our K-9 tactical units, learn a little bit about our Critical Incident Command program as well. So we measure it very well. Of course, there's always room for improvement. We'll be going through the recommendations to see where we need to revisit or rethink some of the things we're doing as far as our policy of procedure goes. But I think we're generally in a good position. What I've learned in my short time in this role is that policing and command and control and Critical Incident Command in the East Coast is a little bit different than what it is in more populated areas in, sorry, the maritime versus the East Coast and the West Coast. As you're aware, we're a very large city with a very large police service and what alleged as well. So more to come on that. That work is ongoing. I don't have an date exactly when they'll be completed, but we have taken a look to make sure that there's no major gaps. And your second question, I'm speaking assumption that it deals with some of the social movements we see or protests that we've seen around the city that are, you know, targeting geographical communities and communities in general as well. I think nothing changes there for us. You know what, you've heard the service and chief talking about the fact that we're there to police behaviors, like people who have the right to lawful assembly and protest and freedom of expression, those kind of things. But it's not, it's not an absolute right and it doesn't, you know, you don't do it at the expense of others. So we'll continue to manage those activities the way we have done over the past few months here. So I hope that answers your question.
Thanks. Thanks very much Superintendent Brier. It does.
Thank you very much and thank you for all of those reports. Again, I've said it before, but again, all of the work that's going on all around the services is quite overwhelming sometimes when you read through all of these reports to get prepared for the meeting, but it's all essential. So thank you all to everyone. We're now going to move on to the agenda items related to the commission itself. So the first item is from the Executive Director of our support staff. And I know she's away, so I'll ask Acting Executive Director Corwin Oddland if he has anything to report.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything in addition to Executive Director Spicer's written report. She has touched on the new appointees and our office move. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Nope, seeing no questions. I will move on to Commissioners Zhang. The Commissioners often represent Commission on various associations and committees, so the first one is the APG report.
Thanks, Chair. I also don't have any additional items to talk, other than the written report, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? We have motion coming up later in our other meetings, so that can wait till then. Seeing no further questions, move on to Commissioner Siddiqui, the CAPG report.
The report's attached, Chair, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Commissioner Siddiqui? Seeing none, Commissioner North Pagan, representing the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team's Civilian Advisory Committee. Almost the longest one.
I have nothing to report this month, but I will next month.
Any questions? No, all right. So that is the end of the presentations and reports today. So we'll move on to the public participation section of the agenda. We will now invite public guests who registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by Commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the Commission or the Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about any specific employee or interaction with the police. If you would like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section so that it can be addressed properly. I would also like to thank everyone who took time to send us a written submission prior to this meeting. They have been provided to everyone on the commission and we appreciate your insights. And finally, a reminder to members of the media that we'll hear from the public first, then we'll hold a media availability for you. So if you could, please put through the first speaker.
Thank you, Chair. Our first speaker is Mr. Matthew McIntyre, and he would like to do a formative presentation on the issue of mailing tickets. Mr. McIntyre, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. As a bit of background, I'm a retired engineer with many years of safety, health, and quality control experience. To state the obvious, to be successful, every organization needs quality processes. I hope that we can all agree that any proper process, especially one that is legal in nature, cannot just meet the minimum requirements under the law. It is essential that the process has public confidence and that it is fair and legitimate. As soon as a ticket is issued, it places a burden and cost on the accused. It consumes a great deal of time and potential lost wages to dispute a ticket and/or the cost of hiring a lawyer or a ticket service. As with any legal process, it is essential that full disclosure of the facts is provided and that it is timely. A recent experience I became involved in has, in my view, been none of that, and so I felt compelled to make this presentation. As we talked, this is about the mailing out of traffic tickets. And I want to ensure everybody that I'm not here to dispute the ticket is the process I'm concerned with. First, I would like to speak about the form of the ticket. While adequate when it's issued in person, it utterly fails when it is mailed out. It cannot know the identity of the driver and the ticket ends up being issued to the owner of the vehicle. Or if there's other proof, it should be provided with the ticket. All available information should be sent with the ticket to allow for a timely decision of the accused. Moreover, the form of the ticket fails to provide critical pieces of information. It neither provides the time or location of the alleged defense. It only provides a date and that it occurred in the city of Calgary. Trying to remember what happened during the entire day, a couple of weeks later, when the ticket is mailed and arrives, and to determine whether or not the ticket is reasonable without the detailed information, in my view, is simply not fair. For these reasons, I believe the practice of mailing out tickets needs to cease until these concerns are properly dealt with. Next, I would like to discuss the process to dispute a ticket. As I now understand it, the process is now essentially an online process, but in my view, it is not well documented. This is because until a ticket is entered into the system by CPS, on the webpage, it is not possible to proceed or to see what options exist. The dispute process should be available on the webpage, so that as soon as a ticket is received, a person can learn what options exist. This failure has led to many phone calls with clerks to learn how to proceed. One thing we learned is that it's possible to make a request for additional information from the officer. But despite having weeks to respond, the officer never did. As a minimum, there should be an obligation to a timely response to say, either say, "No, there is no more information", or if it exists, to provide it at least two to four weeks before the court date. As I noted earlier, the dispute, to dispute the ticket, it must be entered into the system. To my shock, a couple of clerks informed us that the officer is allowed to make that entry up until 8:30 the morning of the court date. That, in my view, is nowhere close to being reasonable. It should be done within a couple of weeks of issuing the ticket. Now, the ticket I am speaking about was not entered into the system by the deadline, so we thought that perhaps the matter had been concluded. But a clerk informed us that the officer now has an additional six months to reissue the ticket and that we should check every two weeks for the next six months to see if that happens. That, in my view, is completely unreasonable. I believe it is clear that this process needs to be improved. Finally, I would like to know how many tickets have been mailed out in the past couple of years. My concern is that because it is so difficult to dispute the ticket, because most people simply don't have the time or money to fight a ticket, I suspect many people have been resigned to paying tickets simply because there's, that's the way to be done with them. When I was working, it's probably what I would have done. At any rate, I can't help but to wonder how many thousands of dollars have been collected because of a process that seems to be deliberately designed to frustrate the accusability dispute the accusation. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I would say I do have some additional quality control concerns about the specific tickets, but I would need another minute or two to comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McIntyre. Appreciate both the time that you took to put this together, to bring it to Public Commission today. And I'm wondering if there is opportunity for someone in Deputy Chief Toffix's area to follow up and hear a bit more. I guess a quick response perhaps from the service in that regard.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, and thanks, Mr. McIntyre, for sharing your experience. I think that's really important. I couldn't agree more with your perspective there on procedural fairness and the need to make sure that it isn't a process that frustrates everybody to the point of, you know, just pleading guilty whether or not you understand or whether or not you remember or whether or not you're guilty or not. So one of the things I would just suggest is maybe if we take this offline, I'm thinking through our professional standards branch, there'd be an opportunity for you to provide that additional information that you have. And under Section 44 of the Police Act, there's an opportunity to look at complaints into policies and services and that type of thing. And we can then have a look at that, the information in your experience here. I would just say that I'm not sure if what you experienced is reflective of what ordinarily happens over the last probably 18 to 24 months, given COVID. There was basically a complete stoppage in those processes and with the courts being closed due to COVID and such. And then also the province working towards a kind of an administrative solution and then changing course on that. So I'm not sure, I think the system is just getting built back up again, but this doesn't sound very positive. So if I could suggest that you maybe just go to the website, you'll find the connection there to professional standards. I think that's the best plugin and I think we can get all the information from you and then look at that process to make sure it's performing the way we wanted to. Thanks, Chair.
Great. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for joining us today. Could you please put through the next person?
Absolutely, Chair. The next speaker that we have registered is Elder Doreen Healy, and she has a question related to the retention of CPS's Indigenous Relations Officers. Elder Healy, you should be free to speak now.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can, yes. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for allowing me to speak on behalf of our Truth and Reconciliation Research Action Team to your Police Commission. My name is Doreen Healy and I'm an Indigenous advisor to the Calgary Alliance for the Common Goods, Truth, and Reconciliation Research Action Team. I've spoken to your commission before and probably some of yours are probably thinking, "Not her again." But we are not going anywhere anytime soon. We will continue to voice our issues and concerns and hopefully continue to work together. So we will keep working, keep working with you until we receive some solid and positive changes to curb the abuse our Indigenous people receive at the hands of police who should be protecting rather than abusing. So from that, the Calgary Alliance for the Common Goods, Truth, and Reconciliation Action Team had, wants to let you know that we had a very well-done and productive meeting with Inspector Avril Martin. We are very grateful to be having such frank, honest sessions with Avril, who is committed to the success of this department. We hope to have another productive meeting soon with Deputy Chief McLudden and Inspector Martin. It may seem obvious to say that leadership needs to be knowledgeable about anti-racism in order to understand Indigenous realities and to really be anti-racist in order to retain Indigenous community mobilizers and others that you intend to hire. But there is apparently still a need to embed anti-racism learnings into management and especially middle management. So we invite the Commissioner to inquire about the current state of the Indigenous Resource Office staff. Previously three, now zero. We understand that Acting Sergeant Ellen Chamberlain's move was known in advance. Also, we want the Commission to know that Indigenous liaison officers, Justin and Devon, have suddenly left the Indigenous Resource Team to which they were so committed. Why did they come to their decision to leave? The Commission could also ask if the Indigenous Advisory Circle is still meeting. The Advisory, the Indigenous Advisory Circle could be de facto leaders of the Indigenous mobilizers. They could also meet regularly with the Commission. Our Truth and Reconciliation Action Team further believes that the Calgary Police Service needs to have at least two Indigenous Commissioners to strengthen the support of the CPS's focus on the success of the Indigenous Relations Unit. We raise these issues because the relatively high incarceration rates of Indigenous peoples, which we are all familiar with, indicate areas of great, with greatest critical need for Indigenous leadership within the CPS. We hope that your Indigenous community mobilizers will start by June or July as these are the best times to build relationships with Indigenous communities. For example, attendance by CPS members in plainclothes as well as Commission members at the Stampede Powell and the Powell Trail can provide a basis for building a relationship of trust with the Indigenous communities. There are excellent resources to become, becoming anti-racist and inclusive of Indigenous peoples and perspectives. But they need to be read, taught, practiced, and incorporated into middle management. Here are some examples, like the Calgary Alliance. Quebec Centre for Community Organizations is a charitable organization whose mission is to support the health and wellbeing of community. You can go on www.coco.net to get more information. There are project and book boards braiding. There are project and book boards braiding, including Indigenous perspectives in your organization, demonstrates how universal these issues are. We can summarize it in four main sections, and these should sound familiar. Integrity. What do you expect the Indigenous perspective to do for you? Commitment. What kind of learning are you willing to do? Harm reduction. What are the hidden costs and labor involved in your invitation to engage? Resilience. Are you committed to addressing the individual and group conflicts and anxieties that will probably arise? These questions seem especially relevant since our meeting with Inspector Avril Martin. We want the Commission to know that Indigenous liaison officers, Alan, Justin, and Devon have suddenly left the Indigenous Resource Team, to which they were so committed. And we want you to find out why they did that. And finally, regarding the CPS's Truth and Reconciliation Team, we're wondering why the commitment to the Indigenous Resource Office of these foreign officers changed so suddenly. There is an answer to that question. We need you to find out what it is. We've
Sorry, Elder Healy, I, I, I jumped in. I thought that was the end of, of your presentation.
I was just going to say, we've done so good work up till now, but then suddenly now we seem to see we're going backwards again. So that's why I'm asking all these questions, but we want to continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your, your, your timely and, and very thoughtful and reflective comments. I, I, I will say that I know that the service is aware of all of the, the situation that you're talking about. Perhaps if you have a very brief comment that you'd like to make, but otherwise, I think Inspector Martin will continue to, to work with you, as will other members of the diversity group within the service. Are there a couple, is there a brief comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just really quickly, Elder Doreen, thank you for taking the time to pop in there. I know you're a great partner. The Alliance is a great partner, and I know why you're concerned about this. I, I'm confident that we're not going to take a step backwards. We're committed to not taking a step backwards. We will have the discussions, and I'm sure Inspector Martin and Deputy McLellan will welcome that meeting and will continue to work forward. We've worked through some issues here, as you know, but we are committed, and I'm sure we'll be able to connect with you again in the future, but I really appreciate your input on this one.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers?
Thank you, Chair. No, there are no other speakers registered.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone, to everyone for joining us today and for those thoughtful comments. Much appreciated, and the written submissions. The public participation session brings us to the end of our agenda. We will now adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you to everyone for coming, and I hope you're having a great evening. Chief Newfeld and I will remain behind to answer questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. Commissioners and members of the service participating in the in-camera portion of our meeting, which follows, will take a fifteen-minute break before continuing. If you can keep the, keep things on mute as we get sorted out here and hear from the media, we'll move on. And I will ask Corwin, we're a little bit behind in our agenda. Is fifteen minutes sufficient for our break, or do we need a bit more?
I'm sure that's entirely at your discretion. Yeah, it's, it's however the Commission feels.
Yeah, I was pretty sure you were going to say that, so. So why don't we make it, if we can get back at six twenty, knowing that we are behind, but that gives everybody a few more minutes to, to find something to eat and get stretched, and you're welcome to listen as you go along. So with that, I will ask Corwin, if you could please put through the first question.
Absolutely. So we do a few media on the line. If you do have a question, please just raise your hand in Zoom, and we will call on you. Perfect. We have a question from Global News Calgary. You should be free to speak now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I just wanted to ask a question regarding the ninety-six unsolved homicides. I did see in the report that two-thirds were from guns. So just curious over CPS's resources, if that kind of leads you into needing more resources in crime guns and tracing them.
Thanks for the question. I'll, I'll tap this one. The answer is it's a combination, yes, but it's a combination not only of resources and expertise, but a combination of technology as well. So we're looking at crime gun tracing that's done here for us at our, at our lab. But when we're looking at an overall crime gun response or a gun response, we have two components to that here at the Calgary Police Service. If gun violence results in a homicide, homicide, it'll take as you know, there's a lot of other gun-related crime that, or, you know, public safety gun violence that doesn't result in homicide, we have a very robust response to that as well, too. It's marrying these things all together and making sure that we're talking to our other partners in public safety across the province and across the country. It's giving us the most success right now. So I don't know if there's exactly one answer. I would say the most important thing we're doing is we're not stepping away from it. We're leaning into it, and that's what we have to do to be successful.
Thank you. Is there a follow-up question?
Uh, no. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so we will move on to Joe Harwood. You are free to speak. Joe, are you there?
There we go. Do you hear me now?
We do hear you now. Go, please go ahead.
All right, thanks. I'm with CBC Calgary. Thanks for taking the question. Sorry if this was answered in the presentation earlier. It's a little hard to hear at times. I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the sheriff's program now that it's coming to an end. Did CPS find that the sheriffs helping? Was that helpful? Did you notice a marked difference in any data or any reports? Like, what kind of differences did you really see numbers-wise?
Thanks very much for the question. We were tracking our number of metrics across the weeks where we partnered with the sheriffs, and we did see a good number of interactions with the community in various perspectives, both on the business front, on the prevention side, but also on the public safety, social disorder side. So realistically, with the number of resources that were provided by the sheriffs, it allowed us to cover more territory, so that was a benefit. But we're just about to start a more comprehensive evaluation to determine the broader impacts, both quantitatively and qualitatively, which will involve some feedback from community and feedback internally. So overall, positive feedback from the members who are participating. I think even for the sheriffs, they, it was a great opportunity to do something different and see a different line of law enforcement.
I know that you say you're going to have like a more qualitative and quantitative analysis of this, and I, I, I think this question might be simplifying it a little bit too much maybe for you, but, you know, it seems like such a simple solution, have more officers. Is that something that, you know, CPS is able to really look at with, if the sheriffs do go away or go back to their regular jobs? I know that CPS is looking at recruitment and things like that, but is it a case of, you know, all this, the downtown disorder that we see and hear so much about? Is it a case of, of numbers from your perspective?
It's a combination of being in the right places with the right resources. So we'd like to take a data-driven approach and be where we need to be. And if that involves adjusting our resource deployment, whether it be in the downtown core or elsewhere, we'll look at that. So for us, it's a good opportunity to see the impacts. Now, there are a number of things that we did overlapping that. As an example, the Safe Public Spaces Action Plan, which we did over the last six weeks or started about six weeks ago. That, a lot of those areas were in similar spots, where you have to kind of work through the impacts of each, but that focused deployment in hotspots and areas that we need to be is something we will always continue to do, and we need to be responsive because it can change.
Awesome. Could I actually just ask your name? Sorry.
Yeah, Deputy Chief Chad Topic of the Community Facing Bureau.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Joe, and we'll move on to Michael Rodriguez from Post Media. Michael, you should be able to speak now.
Hi there. I'm just wondering, in the, in the report on the unsolved murders, you guys mentioned that you're solving cases with racialized victims quicker than, with non-racialized victims. I'm wondering if you can provide numbers that, on that. I didn't see it in the report.
Yeah, sorry. I think the numbers that we had on that were just days solved, so I think it was thirty-six days versus twenty-five for us on average. I'm not so certain that I have the numbers here at hand, so I might have to get back to you on that. That's possible. Then, Michael, not, sorry, not Michael Rodriguez. I just realized you have the same name after. To connect in with correct. We can, we can get, we can get you those numbers.
Great, thanks.
And Joe, you still have a hand up? Is that another, another round for you, or? Oh, never mind. There it goes. Okay, then it appears that we are done, Chair.